Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Today's date is 12/21/2021, and this meeting is hereby called to order. I'm at this time going to ask our county clerk if she would please call the roll and establish quorum.
Good morning. Supervisor Desmond?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
And Frost?
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at metro14live.saccounty.net. Today's meeting will be replayed Friday, December 24th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14.
And at this time, I'll ask our county executive if she would please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good morning and happy holidays to everyone. I want to just give a shout out this morning to Ethan Dye and all of our county staff and regional transit and for all those who opened warming centers and tried to find ways to help people during these cold -- oh, it's been so cold. And so, it meant a lot that you all kept us up to date on all the work that you were doing, and we appreciate and don't want you to think it goes unnoticed. We appreciate all that you've done. And at this time, I'll go ahead and read our meeting announcement, and we'll get right down to our work. The Board of Supervisors encourages the public participation during the meeting in person, telephonically, and in writing, in compliance with the directives of the county, state, and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. This meeting is broadcast live and open to in-public attendance and in-person attendance. The county requires a face mask or face shield while inside the county's administration building, which includes the board chambers and hearing rooms, and recommends social distancing. Meeting procedures are subject to change based on the recommended public health and safety guidelines. Public comments will be taken in order of in-person comments and then comments by phone. If you're making a public comment in person, a face mask or shield is required, and social distancing is recommended while inside the chambers or hearing rooms 1 and 2. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis inside the chambers, and overflow seating is available in hearing rooms 1 and 2. If there are no seats available in the chambers or overflow room, please form a line in the designated area and wait for your turn to make a public comment. Please complete a speaker request form and give it to the clerk staff. A separate speaker request form is required for each agenda item or topic that is not posted on the agenda. When I open the public comments, I will call three names at a time. When you hear your name, please start walking towards the podium inside the chambers and wait for your turn to make a comment. If you're making a public comment by phone, dial 916-875-2500 and follow the prompts to be placed in the queue for a specific agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please refer to the agenda and/or watch the meeting to follow along to determine when is the best time to call and be placed in the queue to make your public comment. You may be on hold for up to an extended period of time, and your patience is appreciated. I will ask the clerk to transfer calls into the meeting accordingly. Each agenda item queue will remain open until the public comment period is closed for that specific item. Members of the public will be given two minutes to make a comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted or disconnected while making your comment. If you need an accommodation pursuant to Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see our clerk staff for assistance or contact the clerk's office at 916-874-5451 or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.net. You may send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.net, or your comment will be routed to the board and filed into the record. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of our meeting procedures. And at this time, I'll ask our clerk to read her clerk's announcements.
Chairperson Frost, we do not have any announcements. We only have one consent matter today.
Thank you. Next item, please, then.
You would still need to vote on the resolution.
I'm sorry?
Item number one, you would still need to vote to approve the resolution. Would you like me to read it into the record?
Yes, please.
Okay. Resolution congratulating Sacramento National Association for the Advancement of Colored People upon the occasion of its 105th anniversary.
Thank you. At this time, I'll ask our board for a motion for approval.
For the record, what was that number?
105?
Oh, okay.
I'm a little confused, I think.
It was number one?
Yes, item number one.
Yeah, no, I was -- for some reason, I thought it was 150th, so. No, it is 105th, so. It is, okay. 105th. We just got the information, I think, just yesterday, so we didn't have the draft yet completed. We will circulate that, but we did one for the 100th, and they're doing a 105th celebration next week, so we don't always do it in five-year increments, but nonetheless, still a milestone.
No, but they're definitely worth celebrating. They're extraordinary.
And I will correct -- we will get the record corrected and to reflect the 150th.
It's right.
It's 105?
No, it's 105. Yeah, you're right. That's why.
I think we're just a little confused.
I was wrong.
Not you.
No, it is 105th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We can all come back for 150th, yes, but.
The chair will go ahead and move that consent item.
Second.
And we have a second by Supervisor Natoli.
Please, please vote.
Thank you.
Unanimous vote with Member Serna absent.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item number two is to introduce ordinance amending sections 22.05.035 and 22.2.60 of the Title 22, the Sacramento County Code related to Senate Bill 9 requirements to allow two primary dwellings on one parcel to provide for ministerial processing of two-lot tentative parcel maps and to address expiration of map approvals. Wait for reading continued to January 11th, 2022 for adoption.
And before we go any further, I forgot to ask if there were comments, public comments, for consent or off-agenda.
We do have two off-agenda comments in the queue.
I'm sorry, Mr. Puhuli, do you mind if we go ahead and do that? I'm a little bit -- I think I'm already beginning my vacation. My mind's already gone on vacation, but I think it'd be appropriate to take those off-agenda items first.
I'd like to move that Supervisor Natoli take over the rest of the meeting.
That's not nice. I'm almost there.
Please send the first caller. Hello, caller. Please start your public comment. You have two minutes.
To be able to speak with the Board of Supervisors, I want to thank you for your service to our county and our communities, and I honor the availability of this time. My name is Debbie, and I am a real estate broker. I've been in Sacramento County for 31 years, and I just want to tell you what happened to me yesterday. I want to get it on the record as my testimony. I had a prescription to pick up at the pharmacy, and as I was wrapping up my transaction, I asked them, the pharmacist, for the information on the FDA-approved vaccines for Pfizer, Moderna, and Johnson &amp; Johnson, and they handed me some Xerox copies. And I said, "These aren't -- these are just copies off the internet. These aren't package inserts." And they said, "There aren't any package inserts because these products are still emergency use authorization, and they are not FDA-approved." So, I was a little shook up by that because it was my understanding that we're going on the knowledge and truth that these are indeed FDA-approved. If they are emergency use authorization, then they come under a whole different body of law. Federal law prohibits employers and others from requiring a vaccination that is being distributed under an EAU. And I really am standing in confusion because truth is very important to me. I believe that truth is a power greater than myself that can restore me to sanity, and if these are indeed.
You have 15 seconds.
Forcing people or mandating others to take a shot is in violation of the United States Constitution, the Nuremberg Code, and I believe that anyone that says that these are FDA-approved and is lying about it needs to be held accountable. That's my statement. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please send the next caller. Hello, caller.
Yes.
Do you have the meeting thing in the background?
I am in the actual chambers, and I would like to request equal accommodation because I'm unable to wear a mask pursuant to Code 51 to make my comments in person.
Where is this person?
I'm right outside the doors.
They were in the hearing rooms. They were directed to the hearing rooms by security.
I cannot wear a mask, but I want to have equal accommodation pursuant to California Code 51 to make my statements.
Okay. I'm not sure who this is.
My name is Brenda.
Okay, Brenda. Do we have a Zoom? I'm told by our legal counsel that we have a Zoom available.
No, I need to have equal accommodation. Zoom is not an equal accommodation. I have something I need to share with you in person, and I don't -- I want to.
Has this person shown their?
The accommodation is either the mask or a shield, or they can make their comment via telephone, if they do not want to wear a mask.
I cannot do -- that is not equal accommodation.
Would you like to proceed with your comment, ma'am? We're in a position here where our legal counsel has advised us that we have made equal accommodations via phone or by Zoom.
This is not equal accommodation, is being provided the equal -- I would like to speak to you in person. I would like to -- I have stuff I'd like to share with you in person, and being over Zoom, I can't share that. Plus, I -- this is not -- that's not right. It's not a law. Tell me the law that I'm breaking, coming in person without wearing a mask. It's not a law. It's a mandate. That's a suggestion.
I'm going to ask our county counsel to advise.
Thank you. So, it's my understanding that a protocol is in place that's consistent.
I'm sorry.
Sorry. A protocol is in place that's consistent with the CDC and our health directors' guidelines. We have offered accommodations, and the accommodation is to have people in the room on the side. Another option, if she would like to come in and she cannot mask, she can wear a shield, so.
I cannot wear a shield. I'm claustrophobic.
Okay.
Those are the options that are available.
Those are not equal. I want equal opportunity.
Ma'am, at this point, I'm going to give you the opportunity to make your public comment, and my suggestion to you is that you reach out to our county clerk for special accommodations. That's one of the announcements that we read before our meeting, and the county clerk office should be able to work out some accommodations with you. Would you like to go ahead and proceed with your two-minute comment?
Sure.
Thank you. You may begin.
I was going to show the actual death rate, which is actually the only meaningful measure of how dangerous COVID-19 is, and is reported -- that was reported on the MSN Coronavirus website, and it shows the death rate is very low and proves there's no relationship between confirmed cases and the death rate. I looked up the numbers on the dashboard for Sacramento, and the death chart states that they don't show age groups with less than five deaths. So, I added up the cases from the 0 to 29 and divided the death total by 26. That's .04%. That just proves that Coronavirus is not killing the children, and they're the ones that are being forced now to vaccinate, and the vaccines are extremely dangerous. I actually pulled up a site from OnWho that had to do with -- that's another thing I wanted to show you, that showed that there is absolute -- they are not recording the flu numbers anymore, as of 2020 to now, 2021, end of now. Now, they're suddenly -- so, did COVID cure the flu? I also emailed all of you the vaccine death report that was published in September of 2021. There was a CDC whistleblower that stated at least five times more deaths in a sworn affidavit. Also, Attorney Thomas Rens received information from a whistleblower inside the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services, which shows that 48,465 people died shortly after receiving their injection. He emphasized that these death numbers are from less than 20% of the US population. So, if we apply that number to the entire number of the population, we see a death rate of almost 250,000.
You have 15 seconds.
There needs to be full disclosure of the adverse events of these vaccines, and they are not only not safe, they are dangerous, and I demand an evidentiary hearing where witnesses are sworn in and the evidence meets evidence code.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Chair, she can provide her written materials to the clerk staff, and they can be distributed to board members.
I believe we already did receive the vaccine report and a couple reports, which I want to thank those of you who are making your comments. We will definitely be following up and reading your submitted information and looking into this further. Did we have other callers?
Yes, ma'am, we do. We have two more off-agenda callers. Please transfer the next caller. Hi, caller. Hello, caller.
Yes.
Please start your public comment. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Marilyn. I'm a constituent. I'm in the overflow room, and I wanted to let you know that your equal accommodation sucks. When I entered this building, I was met with a security guard who decided to chest bump me and put his hands on me and then tried to turn it around and tell me that I put my hands on him. Then, once I walked through the door, that guard turned to the other guard and told him to lock the door. So, now I have two intimidating guards standing outside the door looking at me. One is rubbing his hands together, all the same time looking very intimidating, so I'm having a hard time seeing how this is an equal accommodation! I am so pissed off! I came down here, I took my fucking time, and I'm paying you assholes to sit in those chairs while I'm paying parking to be here also, to come here and make a comment. I'm going to read to you what the CDC says about accommodations for people with disabilities. For people who cannot wear or safely wear a mask because of a disability as defined by the Americans with Disabilities Act, consider reasonable accommodation for workers who are not fully vaccinated, who are unable to wear a mask, or who have difficulty wearing certain types of masks because of a disability. So, what is equal about what you're doing to me right now?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. The caller hung up. Please send the last caller.
Yes.
Please start your public comment. You have two minutes.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Betty Williams, president of the Greater Sacramento NAACP, and I just want to thank the County Board of Supervisors for the resolution that was presented earlier, and we are 105 years old, 105. And just on behalf of our branch, our officers, our membership that's over 1,000, I would just like to thank you from the bottom of my heart for recognizing the oldest civil rights organization in Northern California and in the Greater Sacramento area, because you didn't have to do it, and the fact that you did and recognize us, I am just so honored and proud, and I just needed to call in and share that with you and let you know that. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Betty.
Thanks, Betty.
And that concludes your off-agenda public comment.
Okay. And to the -- to those who spoke out this morning on public comment, I just want you to know that I'm doing some research on the matter of police power and how much police power does the public health officer have, and I -- we definitely want to find a way to accommodate those who are not able to wear the mask. We're trying to -- I'm trying to understand the law around that, but I want to encourage all of you to, I guess, try to, you know, not be emotional and try to stay calm, and let's work through this in a peaceful and lawful way, because we definitely don't want someone to be, you know, feel like they're, you know, being singled out, and we want to hear your voice and we want to see you. We're hoping we can work our way through this as quickly as possible. And I know we have a comment from Supervisor Natoli also.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Chair. I would just ask, you know, I know we've worked diligently to provide the accommodation. Obviously, there continues to be frustration by some who have, you know, attended today and not been admitted to the chambers because of what's been outlined as it relates to both mask and shield wearing. So, as we come into the new year and not knowing exactly how things are going to be put forth as it relates to indoor meetings and masking and so forth, I guess I would just ask again for us, not just the clerk, but for our general services, take a look at how folks might be able to come into the chambers and, you know, it may not be to the podium, but there's some way, again, because it's still, there is this distance. I mean, you know, again, they may be right next door, but we did have the Zoom accommodation previously, and I don't know, it sounded like that may still be available. People were not accessing that, but again, this has been a very long journey, and we're still, again, working our way through it. And again, I think obviously there's a number of factors here to be considered, but so I guess I would just ask, and again, I appreciate Chair Frost, again, trying to work through this as our clerk and certainly other staff here, but, you know, to see if there's a way to actually folks can physically come into the chambers, you know, say their words to us, and then, you know, if they aren't able to wear a mask or shield, they're not, obviously not to remain here, but they certainly give the opportunity to be present in a way that we can see, you know, see them, you know, even if it's at a distance here in the chambers. But so, I guess I would ask us to continue, we, over the holiday, to take a look at that. We'll next come into session, obviously, January 11th, but if there's some way to, you know, physically allow for that and still maintain, obviously, the safeguards that obviously are put in place now and certainly have been for a number of months. So, I don't know, Anne, if there's anything you might want to respond to.
I want to thank you, Supervisor Natoli. That was something that I had asked for a few months ago, and I don't understand why we can't make an equal accommodation, find a way to do it.
I can certainly have additional conversation with Dr. Casiri. You know, we are right now, anyway, under a statewide.
Right.
Indoor mask mandate, and the important thing is that people are allowed to make a public comment, and because we have the phone capability that does allow for public comment, but I will revisit that conversation with Dr. Casiri. What we've implemented here is based upon public health guidance, so we'll certainly have that additional conversation.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, well, I appreciate public health's guidance. There are a lot of citizens who feel like they're not getting answers to, you know, the logic behind the regulatory environment that we've created here, and so, maybe if we could give them answers, they would understand, you know. So, it's a frustration for me personally also, so I understand how they feel, and I appreciate your being open-minded about that, Supervisor Natoli. All right. Are we done with our public comment, then? Let's move on to the next item.
Item number two is introduction ordinance amending sections 22.05.035 and 22.2.60 of the Title 22 of Sacramento County Code related to Senate Bill 9 requirements to allow primary dwellings on one parcel. I did already read the title, but just to.
And thank you for the clearer title. I know that between last Tuesday and this Tuesday, there was a clear title posted and hopefully provided some additional information to folks if they're, you know, interested or following this topic, so thanks for that.
Okay. Good morning, Chair Frost, board members. Chris Puhuli with Planning and Environmental Review. I will be providing the staff presentation for this item, which is a package of county code amendments and development code modifications aimed at providing direction and guidance for the implementation of Senate Bill 9. In September, Governor Newsom signed SB 9, which has two operative provisions. The first is that it requires ministerial consideration of two primary units on one lot within single-family residential zones, and second, that property owners be allowed to split one lot into two lots ministerially. Both of these provisions are exempt from CEQA, have certain requirements that must be met, and become effective on January 1, 2022. Before I go further, I want to mention that staff has been tracking this legislation's requirements and participated in a webinar a couple of weeks ago with state HCD to better understand specific portions of the law. The package drafted for your consideration is based on staff's current understanding of statutory requirements. However, HCD noted that they are working on guidance for jurisdictions, but the guidance was not going to be issued until perhaps sometime during the first quarter of 2022. And since that guidance wasn't going to be issued in the near term, it was prudent to move forward, given that the law goes into effect in January. In short, future updates to the county code and development code may be necessary once detailed guidance is provided by the state.
Excuse me, we have a couple of supervisors who wish to speak. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I want to echo Supervisor Natoli. Thanks, Chris, and I had a conversation with you and Leanne about changing the title. I know Supervisor Natoli did as well to make it clear for folks so they could understand what we're going to be discussing here today.
Absolutely.
Which has major implications for a lot of folks in unincorporated Sacramento County, most of whom are probably in my district, District 3. I'm curious, usually the state would not require us to proceed with something without providing that guidance. Was there any discussion about, you know, maybe delaying implementation of this until that guidance was forthcoming?
There was no discussion during the webinar and during discussions with HCD about delaying the implementation of these provisions. I think it's, as has happened with other legislation, notably the ADU legislation, many times the legislation goes into effect and additional guidance is provided after the legislation has gone into effect.
And in between, we're in kind of the unenviable position of having to implement something without that guy. And I think that's important for. And I think that's important for folks, members of the public, to understand why we're having this discussion today before the guidance comes out. And I'll have some additional questions as well as you go through your presentation. All right, thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, I was going to comment very similar to what Supervisor Desmond just spoke to, is that, you know, this isn't the first time, probably won't be the last time, but, you know, there's this urgency to address an issue legislatively. They take it, you know, through their process. It's enacted in statute. It has a start date of January 1st, in this case, of 2022, you know, less than, or 10 days away. And here we are. You know, we are having to take up, you know, ordinance considerations to how to administer this, because apparently on January 2nd or 3rd, when we're open for business, folks can come in and, you know, begin to trigger the, you know, this action. I don't think that's going to, there's going to be a rush to the counters on January 3rd. On the other hand, you know, absent guidance, and whether we concur or not with the guidance, to say, well, we'll have it in the first quarter, but the expectation for all the cities and counties in this state is that we're going to administer this beginning January the 1st. And I just think, again, it's objectionable in the sense that, you know, whatever the, you know, merits and or not are of the legislation, you know, we're going to carry that out, being that, that's what counties and cities do when we're told we need to do things. But, again, I just, for them not to discuss that, you know, and for us, you know, maybe we reach out to our legislators, you know, maybe this is going to be embraced by the people of this county, and certainly we'll do our job in administering it, but I don't think that's fair. You know, and I'm not looking at you, Chris, I mean, it's not your decision, but, you know, there's an issue here that relates to, you know, significant changes in land use, you know, codes and the way they're administered and the way we would normally notice and reach out to folks. It's changed that landscape dramatically, because it's no longer noticed, at least under prescriptions in the law, it's directed that we will do this and that you will, we, the county, will approve. And there is no secret document. So, the process has basically been not just shortcutted, but it's been compressed, and, but we don't have the guidance. Now, whether we would choose to use the guidance or not, or we're going to use our own judgment, we have a little bit of, I think, leeway here, discussing the staff report, and we're going to get to that in a moment. But, again, I just find it very objectionable, because, again, it's kind of the way business is done in this state, and when it comes to a matter of land use and zoning that has a great deal of permanence to it, it certainly can have an impact relative to the housing needs in this county and so forth. And I think, as Supervisor Desmond said, you know, portions, significant portions of this district could potentially be affected, all of our five supervisor districts could, but his in particular. Again, I just, I don't find that acceptable, that, well, we'll get back to you sometime in the first quarter. You know, it would seem, you know, if it's a priority to pass the legislation, it'd be a priority to give the guidance by the time we're required to enact this. Or that it's going to be enacted whether we do anything or not, because basically it's going to be the law of the state come January 1st, whether we do anything with the ordinance or not. I don't know, I just find that very objectionable, and, again, maybe it's more par for the course than I would want to acknowledge, but at any rate, enough comments on that, and we'll hear the report, and I guess we can talk about what we want to do with it. Thanks.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Okay. There are locational requirements and zoning criteria for projects to qualify for processing under SB 9. The first criteria is that properties must be located in a single-family residential zoning district. It's important to note that this requirement does not include all zoning districts that allow for single-family residential development, but rather zoning districts that are primarily for the development of single-family homes. As our zoning code contains descriptions for the various zoning districts, staff has concluded this provision most aligns with our RD 1 through RD 10 zoning districts. During the webinar with HCD that I mentioned, the approach of relying on our general plan, land use designations and zoning code descriptions was mentioned as best practice, so staff believes this recommendation tracks with the intent of SB 9. As noted in the board package, these provisions also apply to properties located in special planning areas and neighborhood preservation areas that have a single-family residential underlying zone. And to the extent that projects come in, in those SPA or NPAs, staff will need to make a determination about whether or not they are eligible for processing under SB 9. In addition to properties located, being located on properties zoned for single-family residential, the property must also, I'm sorry.
It was a whisper, I do have a supervisor with a question. I just wasn't sure where to stop you. I'm sorry.
That's fine. We can stop there before I go into the next test.
Okay.
Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I apologize for breaking in, Chris. I just, so, I know we determine that RD 1 through RD 10, and our designations are not consistent with a lot of other jurisdictions, obviously, right?
Correct.
I'm just curious, you know, RD 10, so was the, was the criteria that you use zoning designations where we see primarily single-family housing? But a lot of RD 10 areas, we see multifamily housing on those, on areas designated RD 10. Isn't that correct?
We do. We see both higher-density, single-family product as well as duplexes. In fact, in our zoning code, it's mentioned that RD 10 is a, is a primary designation for duplexes, and given that this bill also allows for two primary units, including duplexes on, on single properties, that we believed that the RD 10 district was also appropriate to include in this, in these provisions.
And because the reason I ask the question is, are we perhaps being over-expansive in our interpretation of SB 9 by including all the way up to RD 10?
Again, in evaluating our descriptions in the general plan and the compatibility matrix, we felt that we were tracking pretty closely with what we thought the intent of SB 9 was. Perhaps at the lower level, at the RD 1, RD 2, maybe, maybe that part might be a little bit more expansive, but at the RD 10, at least
That was more consistent? Okay.
From staff's review, we believe that to be consistent with the intent of SB 9.
And then, along these same lines, was the, in the discussions with HCD, I imagine the League of Cities provided some guidance, some input about this and interpretation and how this is going to be implemented by municipalities?
Yeah, we had been looking at direction from APA, the American Planning Association, the state APA. I have not personally looked at the League's guidance.
Okay, but these, what we've done is consistent with that guidance from APA, correct?
We believe, yes.
I mean, again, fitting a round peg into a square hole, or a square peg into a round hole at times, because our designation, it's not consistent across the board, but...
Yes, we believe so.
Okay, okay. And I just, it just occurred to me, because, you know, I'm going to be commenting later along some of the same lines of Supervisor Natoli, certainly, but I was thinking about the SPAs and the NPAs that communities work so hard to get in place to preserve some of the atmosphere and the qualities and characteristics of their neighborhoods, and a lot of times those don't have RD 10, they don't go up to RD 10. I think they're probably RD 5, really, for most of them, at least in my district.
And lower.
And lower, right, up to RD 5, yeah, okay. All right, thanks, Chris.
So, as I mentioned, it's, there's a two-part test. I spoke of the first test, which is that properties must be located on a single-family residentially-zoned district, in a single-family residentially-zoned district. The second test is that they must also be located in an urbanized area or urban cluster as defined by the U.S. Census Bureau. The map on this graphic is included in your agenda packet as Attachment 1 and highlights eligible areas. I should note that the map is based on 2010 census data, and we are expecting a revised map in late 2022. However, for now, we will be using this map to determine eligible areas for SB 9 processing.
Yes, please, Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sorry, Chris, I'll be interrupting. Just to help me understand, urbanized area, I mean, you know, it's funny, a lot of my, I mean, Fair Oaks, for instance, and then I think of Orangeville and Rio Linda and Alberta, and I'm sure certainly some communities in the South area. What is just the general definition of an urbanized area, for purposes of, I think, public, you know, edification here?
Yeah, that's a good question. I actually don't have a good answer for you off
How about intuitively?
Off the cuff, yeah. I'm assuming that it's a certain population density
Density in an area, okay.
Within a identified geographic area that the U.S. Census Bureau designates.
I know a lot of these folks in some of these areas wouldn't consider themselves as living in an urbanized area, yet they're still included in these new provisions that we're implementing, or you're proposing us to implement. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, once we've identified and determined that a request meets locational and zoning tests for SB 9 processing, there are some additional criteria for parcel maps or urban lot splits, as they are called in the law. It's important to note that some of these criteria do not comport with our zoning code's development standards, so future updates may be needed to our zoning code. The proposed lots must be at least 1,200 square feet and roughly equal in size, so no more than a 60% to 40% split in the size post parcel map approval. SB 9 limits side and rear yard setbacks to four feet. However, we are able to use our zoning code's objective standards for front and corner setback requirements. There is a requirement that the applicant requesting a lot split sign an affidavit indicating they will reside in one of the properties for three years from the date of the approval of the tentative parcel map. SB 9 is silent as to the enforcement of this provision, but our presumption is that the enforcement would be handled as a civil matter between private parties. The law prohibits any dwelling unit created under SB 9 to be used as a short-term vacation rental. Therefore, parcel maps will be conditioned to prohibit rentals of less than 30 days. SB 9 does allow for a jurisdiction to require that each unit provide one off-street parking space except for properties which are located within a half-mile walking distance of a high-quality transit corridor or major transit stop. As I mentioned earlier, these urban lot splits will be processed ministerially and are therefore exempt from SEQA. Finally, another key component of SB 9 is that it extends the initial life of tentative maps from 36 months to 48 months from the date of approval. So, our proposed ordinance provides that flexibility for all tentative maps, not just SB 9 filed maps. I should note that at last week's board meeting, you introduced an ordinance amending county code for tentative map extensions, so these two amendments taken together provide additional flexibility for the development community. The board package includes an updated user guide, which outlines the processing of two-lot parcel maps filed under SB 9. I want to walk through how staff is anticipating requests be handled, and as I mentioned earlier, this approach could change based on direction from HCD. Staff is developing an SB 9 application for parcel maps, and we propose to charge a flat fee for the application, similar to the fee charged for parcel maps, tentative parcel maps, but removing the charges for noticing in CPAC meetings. Staff believes the fee approach is reasonable, given the maps are still subject to review and conditioning. Staff intends to utilize our project review committee to analyze the parcel maps, as is done for other ministerial entitlements. I wanted to note that, per the draft user guide, applications would not be noticed to surrounding property owners or considered by the CPACs. This approach is consistent with other ministerial requests considered by planning, such as design reviews.
Excuse me, Supervisor Desmond.
Thanks. So, just so I understand, just some of the mechanics of this, and I'll finish off with your, I'll start with your last point you just made. So, is there anything in SB 9 that would prevent at least a noticing provision to a CPAC?
No, there's nothing that would prohibit any noticing requirements.
Because I've heard from, I've heard from a lot of folks, a lot of my constituents, that they're very, they're very concerned that they won't even, won't even know about these things occurring. And so, part of your plan, even though it's not required by the legislation, is that we kind of remove some of that community notice and involvement. I mean, even though they wouldn't have, I mean, they're already advisory to begin with.
Yeah.
And that's, so that's something I would certainly want to discuss moving forward about, if that's necessary, we could, we should maybe include that. The other thing, and just so on the lot split, I know you're going to be talking about the two-dwelling unit provisions. So, on the lot split, just for the mechanics of SB 9, and let me preface this with, you know, I agree with Supervisor Natoli that, I mean, obviously, we need, we need more housing, we need ways, innovative ways, creative ways to get more housing. We have a crisis. But I don't think, and I know that housing policy, land use policies in the state of California are rife with abuses and racist abuses over the history, but I don't, I don't think that single-family zoning is inherently a racist thing. I think local land use planning is where land use planning should be, because there are so many unique characteristics of local populations and needs and services and desires, frankly. But with a, just on the, so I just want to preface it with that, but on the, so with an RD 10, if someone has a one-acre parcel that's RD 10, they could apply for a lot split that would bring that density to RD 20 units in that acre, under these provisions?
No.
Okay, explain that to me, because that's, I know that's an over-simplistic interpretation. So, if I have, I'm a property owner, and I have just a one-acre parcel, it's RD 10, and I want to do a lot split, and I say, hey, SB 9 says I can, you know, it looks like I could double the density there. That's not, it's not that simple, correct?
It's not that simple. You would have to sign an affidavit indicating that you were going to live on one of the properties for a three-year period. And so, under that scenario, again, I would assume that, that they would be building, at the most, four homes on each lot, I'm sorry, two homes on each lot, so four homes total would be the way that they would handle it under an RD, under an SB 9 lot split. In that case, if it was a one-acre site that was zoned RD 10, you know, they could build 10 units on that, on that one lot, so I'm not sure...
But I could do that anyway under
Absolutely.
Pre-SB 9. I'm saying, how does that dynamic change under SB 9? I can, I can increase the density just by ensuring that I live in one of those homes that are built, correct?
You would have to live in one of the homes that was built, correct?
So, to get back to my previous question, though, then, if, as long as I live in one of the homes, I could increase the density beyond the designation, whether it's RD 5 or whatever it is? Is that, is that correct? I'm just kind of, kind of coming up with some hypotheticals here that folks are really concerned about.
Sure, yeah, I'm tracking. It seems that one of the lots may be able to be built at that RD 10 density, but then the other lot that would be created would have to have a home that would be lived in by the property owner splitting the lot.
Okay, so the doubling would only apply to that specific, to add one additional?
I mean, presumably, if they were going to build out at the allowed density but live in one of those units that was created
Okay.
Perhaps. That could be something that we might need to kind of dig into a little bit more.
I know I'm a little slow on the uptake with some of these things, Chris. I just want to, I just want to make sure we're talking about some of the unintended consequences, and something that, you know, you and I have talked a lot about neighborhoods, specifically in my district, and I just, it really, it just concerns me how we may see some really increased densities right in the middle of a neighborhood, whereas our local planning efforts have always been around, you know, larger transportation corridors that make more sense. You know, I also get very concerned about the level of services, and I know that there are some exemptions for some of the transportation requirements. I mean, I just get really concerned about how are some of these neighborhoods on the interior going to handle what could be a pretty dramatic increase in traffic, increase in just things like trash pickup affecting the neighborhoods, on roadways that were never designed for this, this level of density. And this is some of the things that certainly concern me and my constituents, so I think I understand what you're, how you're... you're explaining this. I appreciate it.
Actually, as I'm thinking it through a little bit more, too, just to maybe point out that if they weren't doing single, or if they weren't doing a resultant project that was consistent with SB9, so if they were going to do multifamily on these created lots, they would have to adhere to the multifamily development standards, which they probably wouldn't be able to meet by doing that lot split. So, that could be another, maybe, protection against, against that occurring.
Okay, thank you.
I should point out, one of the, one of the items that I was going to bring up, you had mentioned the noticing requirements that we are proposing, or the, no noticing of the projects for the urban lot splits to the surrounding property owners, and no noticing to the CPACs, which, again, I mentioned, is consistent with how we handle non-discretionary design reviews, for example, which is a ministerial action. An alternative should the board want to consider would be a, an approach tracking with our short-term rental permits, which, as you may know, do get noticed to property owners within 300 feet of the subject site post-approval. And so, that is another ministerial action that, should the board wish to direct staff to kind of track, that is something that could be considered.
I appreciate that, and I, I think that's important, the tracking. I also think, I know a CPAC can't, you know, inject delay into the process because it's ministerial, but I do think there's also value in CPACs knowing about these, local residents knowing about these where they're occurring. I just, as, just as a matter of, just local government and civic engagement, I think that's, that's important, and that's certainly something I would, maybe hopefully, we'd consider as a board, so. Thank you, Chris.
Okay.
Excuse me, Chris, Supervisor Natoli.
Sorry, Chris, since you're on the point, I would just say with the last point, I can concur wholeheartedly that, ministerial or not, that notice to folks, because as you have on the chart up here, it's a planning director's decision. Much different than parcel maps have been in the past. Those have never been discretion to the planning director. And this is much different than design review. This is creating additional lots with additional dwellings, and, as I said, any benefits and/or issues that accrue go with that. And you talk about appeals process here on the, on the slide, that, you know, but there is no, there's no SEQA document, so there's no consideration regarding any impacts on the lot as relates, I trust the planning director can look at it, but if there were trees, you know, their ordinance relate to trees, the parking is no longer a consideration. And I just, you know, at a minimum, letting folks know. Obviously, that appeal process, if it's ministerial, there's very little of any latitude, so you don't want to give people a false impression. On the other hand, this is new. We're being asked to administer it, and I think that, if nothing else, out of, you know, out of the approach that we've, I think, taken historically in this county, certainly not to be, you know, obstructionist, but to, but also to let folks know of land use decisions. And, you know, this is the creation of new parcels. And when you talk about a parcel, again, it may be the exaggerated instance, but it's, it's allowed for here, is you could have a 2,400-square-foot parcel to be split to a 1,200-square-foot parcel. You know, most single-family houses are 1,200 square foot, by average. I mean, there are, you know, many that are bigger and some that are smaller. That's the entire size of a lot, and you're talking about, you know, in the urban setting, but in large part, these are suburban neighborhoods. And so, it will be a change. It'll be a significant change over time. And, you know, done right, obviously, I think probably we'll find acceptance in a lot of quarters, but I, you know, but not telling people and just letting the process go. Appeals, if people wanted to choose that route, periods will pass because they're fairly definitive, and they're, you know, on a short timeframe, 10 or 15 days, once the decision's rendered. I just think letting folks know, and, you know, maybe just, there's only a handful of these over the next few years, but I think it's hard to predict, particularly in this housing market and all the things we talk about here on a regular basis that are driving some of this legislative approach. But I would say from the get-go that, you know, a premise here needs to be that we will send a, you know, a courtesy notice, if you want to call it that, to the CPAC, and that we would notice adjacent neighbors, whether we use the 500, you know, foot radius or some other prospect as we process this application. I just think that that's, that's key to, again, to our responsibility to carry out state law. So, I would just leave it with that for right now. But again, I know we're interrupting you, but I think it was a key point up here, and I think that it ties back to people's right to exercise their right to appeal, whether they have a basis for doing that or not. So, thanks.
I just want to also make sure I understand correctly, as relates to the rural communities, this does not apply to ag rez?
That's correct. It does not apply to ag rez, nor the areas that are, that are not in a urban cluster or
So, an area like Orangeville, where they cherish those two-acre lots, that that's not going to completely change the face of their community because of this?
That's correct. The Orangeville, Orangeville is included as an urbanized area. However, the ag rez parcels in Orangeville would not be subject to the SB9 processing provisions.
And I want to concur with Supervisor Desmond and Natoli with supporting a public process through the CPACs. Thank you.
Okay, so the last point that I was going to make on this slide is that, as Supervisor Natoli mentioned, the decision body for these items will be the planning director with appeals considered by the Planning Commission doing business as the Board of Zoning Appeals. Regarding requests to construct two primary units on one parcel, attached or detached dwelling unit requests will be processed consistent with recently-approved accessory dwelling unit development standard requirements. This recommendation is based on ease of implementation and a determination that SB9 appears to generally follow enacted ADU legislation. Because SB9 does not include a provision detailing the maximum size of the two dwellings, and instead states requirements cannot preclude a unit from being at least 800 square feet, staff intends to use the zoning code provisions that allow for a second primary unit of 800 square feet to 1,000 square feet, depending on bedroom count, with an option to apply for a discretionary permit to exceed the maximum size standards up to 1,200 square feet. By using these standards, it will result in size limits being applied to one of the two units created under SB9. This item did not come up directly in the webinar with HCD. However, staff does believe this area will be addressed with HCD guidance. As the board is aware, staff is working on a comprehensive zoning code package to update use and development standards related to 2019 housing legislation. Staff is also intending to update the package with any new requirements stemming from this SB9 package. Therefore, staff is seeking board direction today as to more lenient size standards for that second primary dwelling.
Excuse me, Supervisor Natoli.
So, Chris, and I know it was touched on in the, in the staff report, but we have a number of special planning areas and neighborhood preservation areas in this county. And, you know, some of the intent of this legislation obviously goes to what's the heart of those ordinances that were embedded in public hearing processes, have been long been established in county zoning regulations, have been administered by the planning department, and been purviewed this board. What does it do to those, or, and I think you outlined that there's probably a dozen or so that you've identified. This basically usurps any of the provisions that relate to things that are addressed in SB9, but I guess I'd like to know how you're going to administer that, because, again, talking about notice to folks, and having been on the board the years I have, we've had some pretty vocal and lively discussions in these chambers regarding proposals in some of those, you know, neighborhood preservation areas and special planning areas. And I guess I'm curious, as from the planning department's take on where we're headed with regards to?
Yeah. We are going to need to do a little more work as it relates to SPAs and NPAs. The general direction is, as you mentioned, this, this law does take precedence over our zoning code and special planning area ordinances and NPA ordinances. However, we are able to have objective zoning standards for areas and for the county, as long as they do not conflict with the requirements in SB9. So, as I mentioned, there are minimum lot size requirements in SB9. There are minimum setback requirements in SB9 for side and rear yard setbacks. So, we are going to need to evaluate proposals that come in, that are in SPAs and NPAs, and have to make a decision about whether or not a request is able to be processed under SB9, as long as they're not conflicting with these SB9 provisions. And we will be able to perhaps apply some of the development standards in our SPAs and NPAs, again, provided they don't conflict with the SB9 requirements.
Well, one that's apparent, and you just touched on it, is certainly the setback requirements. And in some of the SPAs, the setbacks were designed, actually, to, you know, provide some separation between uses that might be of a higher intensity. You might be up against an industrial zone, up against a commercial zone, and, you know, it might have been existing at the time, and so the recognition was that you need to have a deeper rear yard setback to separate from some potential incompatible activities or uses. If I read this correctly and understand what you just presented, that if a lot split could be configured in such a way that they could put a dwelling within four foot of the rear property line, as well as the side property lines, and similarly, in some of the neighborhood preservation areas, in large part in Supervisor Desmond's district, District 3, you know, there were front yard setbacks that were, you know, 35 feet. You had some side yard setbacks that were 15, 20, 25 feet because of the larger lots and so forth. And if, again, if I read this, interpret this correctly, that erases those provisions. This erases it, and if we adopt this, I mean, it's in state law, then we basically are, I guess, you know, giving our green light to it. I mean, I don't want to say we blessed it, because we may, we may or not, but, and that's problematic, because, again, I think, you know, people have, you know, constructed and designed the outline of the lots on which they reside in such a way that there are those separators, and, you know, and they're embedded some probably 30 or 40 years in county ordinance. And this basically, am I being accurate about it? It erases those provisions?
Yes, you are. That is, that is correct.
And there's no ability to, I mean, maybe I turn to June for a moment here, counsel. So, there's no ability for us to have any additional flexibility in how we consider those things, as it relates to particularly setbacks, June?
Well, as to the setbacks, we do have to follow the state law requirement, the SB9 requirements. But we do have discretion to use and apply objective standards. And so, in looking at that, the planning department will look at the objective design review standards and the other objective standards that are in place, and see if the project, the proposed project would be consistent with those. And if it's not, then that may be a basis to deny the project.
And I know there are even provisions, and I think there are, in some of those NPAs, that you, you know, distance from property lines, but also stipulations that you wouldn't have two-story units and/or additions to buildings within certain, you know, envelopes on the lots and so forth. And this doesn't, this is silent, so anything in the, in the single-family zones that you've defined would allow two stories, four foot from the property line, both rear and side yards. I don't, it doesn't speak to the front yard. What are the front yard setbacks? 10-foot minimum?
Yeah, as I mentioned, we would be able to use our front yard setbacks from our zoning code or for any neighborhood preservation area, because it is silent in SB9 as to a front yards, minimum front yard setback.
Okay, so, that portion of an NPA or SPA, if it called for a 25-foot, you know, setback, 20 used to be the standard. We come down to 10, and even encroach into that, get within six feet or four feet in some cases, I think, with some of the punchouts on some of the houses and so forth. That, it would still preserve that. So, in the neighborhoods where you have this deep setback from the street, that is the one that we can hold to, and this doesn't change, the law didn't change it, and so we're not changing that, but it certainly affects the side and rear yard setbacks.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. That's all I have right now.
Thank you, Supervisor Natoli. Supervisor Desmond?
A couple follow-up questions. With respect to, and I know Chris or June, I mean, some of our setbacks in some of these areas are also kind of a practical reason for it, because of the rights of way in some of these areas. I mean, some places, the right-of-way for the sewer, sewer line is in the backyard. I mean, SB9 wouldn't prevent us from still applying a setback that is required to maintain our right-of-way. Is that correct?
I believe so. SB9 does allow for, does allow for provisions regarding easements in public facilities, and so if there was a required setback from a public facility, I believe we could apply that.
And then, thank you. And then, with respect to the specific example that Supervisor Natoli mentioned, some of these SPAs or NPAs that have limitations on two stories, my interpretation of SB9 is that it, I mean, there are still elements of an NPA that we could apply, as long as it does not conflict with SB9. But, so, for instance, that specific provision, could we still apply that as a limitation in an NPA that precludes it?
The height requirement? Correct. Yes, there are no restrictions.
Okay, great. Okay, I just want to confirm that, because, oh, boy.
Yeah. Objective zoning standards, subdivision standards, and design standards can still be applied to SB9.
Okay, great.
And then, also, you asked earlier about the number of dwellings that can be placed on a parcel. SB9 does put a limit, and it's, it's limited to no more than two residential units. So, if someone on an RD10 wanted to do more than that, that would not be an SB9 application.
Great.
They would need to apply in a different manner.
They would have to get a map.
Follow our traditional
Say RD10. They'd have to have a map with 10 units, or for 10 parcels, and then, if someone wanted to apply SB9, they'd have to own one of those parcels, live on it, and then do a lot split of that parcel, right? I mean, that's kind of how it would play out. Okay.
Right. It's for proposed housing developments containing no more than two residential units within the residential
Thanks, thank you, June. That's, because that was some of the panic, oh, my God, it is just automatically going to potentially double the density even up to RD10, or an RD5. You could put now 10 units on an RD5 acre. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, just while we're on that point, so, let me be clear in my understanding, that the objective zoning standards, but in the NPA, in some of the NPAs, there are provisions that would otherwise be allowed by the development code for two stories, but there are provisions that either call for a deep access if you're going to have two stories, and we're now saying a deeper setback, and that those setbacks no longer apply. So, what, what then restricts the second story that would go in that setback that could be as close as four feet? Is there, where is it that we get that authority that says that you, you know, says you can put a dwelling unit in there, and, you know, two stories is allowed under building code, but it's not provided for by the NPA? I want to be clear.
Again, if the NPA has a height restriction of one, that requires only a one-story structure, the, that one, that height requirement would be able to be carried forward in processing requests, because SB9 does not specify a height requirement.
Right. Okay, but I get that. But, but, right now, the height requirement is tied to a setback in the sense that you can have two stories, but you have to be 25-foot off the property line, just use that for an example. Now, the 25-foot goes away. You still have to have a limitation, but basically, you've shrunk the 25-foot to four-foot. And so, where is it that you, that you can hold the line on the, on the second story? And so where is it that you can hold the line on the second story?
I understand. In some of those, in some of the NPAs that I've seen, there is a stepped.
Yes.
Height requirement based on setback. I think we would need to evaluate that request. It would be likely that we would impose the more stringent height requirement within that area. That could be a way of approaching it. And in areas where there isn't a stepped requirement and it's just a two-story or 20, 25-foot height requirement, then they would, as you mentioned, be able to put that structure within four feet of the.
Okay. Because I want to be clear, because I think Supervisor Desmond came with a little different impression of that. And again, I'm not trying to think about all the situations, but I can, I can almost rest assured that if that comes up and there's folks that are concerned about it, that, you know, there's going to be calls to the board and certainly the planning department. And we ought to at least, you know, have thought it through. And the explanation may be what you've just outlined, and I trust that. But I also wanted to ask, though, and this was key as you were explaining about the lot splits, that if you have a single-family lot that has a home on it and it's able to be divided under the prescriptions that are outlined here, that we already allow ADUs, so you could have, but there's no existing unit, just the one primary dwelling. So once it was split, you could then, assuming you can meet the setback requirements, which are pretty minimal here and any other requirements, you could put the ADU on the lot from which the newly created lot was divided, plus in the new lot, you could put a primary dwelling and an ADU. So you could go from one to four. You could quadruple.
That's correct.
I mean, you could double it now because, again, assuming you can meet it, the setbacks, you could put the ADU. So in essence, in any of the single-family zones, you could go from one to four with ministerial action.
That's absolutely correct. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. In order to implement this new law in a couple of weeks, staff is working to update all of the required materials. We have looked at existing projects to determine if any of them are eligible to transition to this entitlement approach. At this point in time, we're thinking that there may be one or two projects in pipeline that may be able to transition. We have placed information on planning's website and fielded a number of inquiries from the public asking about these proposed requirements. Staff are updating applications and developing forms so that we can be prepared to take in requests at the beginning of the year. Over the past couple of weeks, we have notified the CPACs and planning commissioners about today's hearing and provided them with the report package and materials. Staff will be providing presentations on these requirements at all of the CPAC meetings beginning in January. We will also conduct an informational session with the planning commission in early January. Lastly, as I noted, we are working on that comprehensive zoning code package. And so it's likely that we may need to roll in some of the new requirements into that package. So this final slide contains the recommended actions from staff. We're recommending that you introduce the ordinance, waive full reading and continue to January 11. And then if there's any further direction for staff to receive that direction and incorporate that into these upcoming packages.
Supervisor Natoli?
So a question I posed to Chris and to June, and it may be self-evident. But so if we did not take action to approve this, we basically didn't endorse it. It doesn't negate the state law. What's the outcome or fallout that occurs from that? Obviously, we lose some of the control, but what is it that we would have to do or what would we do if this board didn't endorse it?
I think the real issue, I mean, there is very limited material as you're hearing from me during the presentation. It's actually before the board for action. There are some slight adjustments to county code. One of the provisions that I mentioned that is in that county code package is providing an additional benefit, if you will, to land developers and the development community to extend the initial life of tentative maps from three years to four years. And so if you weren't to adopt this package, that would be something that would not be provided for. But if the board were not to approve the package, we would still need to be in a position to receive and process applications beginning in January. And so we would have to comply with that law and those requirements and process applications.
So, but the extension of maps, that's an action that could be separate and apart. I mean, we could take that. I mean, I saw that. That's obviously embedded in the resolution. So from a practical standpoint, that whether we adopt this or not, you're going to process them. But you have a whole package of things that includes the fees, including the definition that you've provided relative to, you know, some of the aspects of how we would, you know, oversee this as it relates to square footage and such. But if we didn't, then the square footage would just be whatever they ask for as long as they could fit it on a lot and meet the setbacks? Is that essentially, if we didn't adopt this and apply the provisions we are being recommended by the planning department to adopt, since there's no maximum on the square footage, they would allow the house to be as large as?
Yeah, no, at this point in time, we are proposing to use the ADU.
No, you are. But I'm saying if we did not adopt this.
Correct.
With your recommendation, then the state law is the fallback. And so, and that provides for what?
We believe that it provides for what we're proposing to you or what we are informing you of is the ADU requirements. And so.
Oh, it does?
The package, right, that's what.
But I thought there was no maximum square footage. I thought you said there was no maximum in the law.
That's correct. There's no maximum in the law. And so what we believe we are able to do is to process consistent with our ADU development standards. And so that's what we would do. And the recommendation before you is to consider whether or not we want to adjust within our future zoning code package to allow for a larger standard.
Okay, but January 1, if somebody came in to make the application and this board didn't take the action that's being recommended here today, you would then, how would you process relative to the square footage? You use the ADU? That's how the planning, okay, that's how the planning department?
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Supervisor Desmond?
Thanks. And just on that last point Supervisor Natoli was talking about. So you're asking for direction on the square footage limits for a second unit, so for an ADU, to make those limits much larger on the high end? I mean, I have no issue with changing it from 850 to 800 on the low end. But I guess I'm, I don't understand why you're asking for or that you need that direction with respect to an ADU.
Well, currently, our code prohibits ADUs of larger than 1,000 square feet unless they apply for a special development permit. And so, again, that's what we're going to be moving forward with now. As I mentioned, we do have a code package that we're working on that if the board wanted it to be 1,200 square feet by right, which I know there's been some discussion about even with the ADUs of moving to a 1,200 square foot by right as opposed to requiring the special development permit, that is something that we could roll into that package.
Okay, but again, that's not addressed in SB 9.
It is not. It is not.
So the scenario that Supervisor Natoli kind of laid out, which I think is an entirely realistic one in certain areas. I'm not, I'm not kind of worried, you know, the sky is falling that we're going to see just thousands of these applications overnight. But I think in that very realistic scenario where you have one parcel, one house on one lot, and they take advantage of SB 9 to split that, put two houses on that one lot, and then they each have an ADU, well, now you could not only have potentially four dwelling units on the lot, but if we change the maximum size of the ADU, they could all be very large units on that one lot, correct? If we make that change to the ADU standard?
They could be up to 1,200 square feet, correct.
I can make a comment. I was probably the one who brought that up. I know that there are standard sizes for manufactured homes. And so they have standard design and sizes whereby if someone was able to, you know, easily get that approved.
Use that product and.
It could increase affordability. I think that was the inspiration behind that. It was more, we're working with site-built, but also if someone wanted to do manufactured, they could get a standard model rather than having to pay extra for special design for 200 more or less square feet, basically. That was the.
And that 1,200, I, no, I understand that. But there's not, you're not asking for guidance to perhaps go above that for the ADU?
Not requesting that at this point. I should say.
I understand that, Supervisor Cross. Thank you.
Should say that depending on HCD's guidance, they may indicate.
Sure, that may change things.
Right. They may indicate that, but we haven't heard that at this point.
Okay, and a couple other points. As far as your outreach, Chris, and I appreciate you explaining, you and I, I think, maybe Leann and I had talked about, you know, whatever action we take today, if we take action, because if we don't take action, you're still going to be administering these applications consistent with SB 9, which is essentially what you've laid out. You've laid out a way forward that you believe is consistent with SB 9. So I imagine you would be implementing those or approving those applications consistent with what you're proposing here today, either way. But in terms of some of the, and like you said, after we get HCD guidance and maybe after you hear from the CPACs and other public comment, we can make some adjustments, obviously, if it's consistent with SB 9. In terms of the outreach, I would also see some value. And how many SPAs and NPAs did you say there are that were going to be affected by this?
Well, they will all be affected by it.
And how many are there total?
I believe there are 70 some odd.
Okay. I'm just thinking of some other outreach efforts where we, I know that's very time-consuming and onerous to reach out to more individuals and organizations that are affected by it. But I'm just, that's what I'm thinking about. I mean, because this is potentially a pretty dramatic change, obviously, in these areas with NPAs and SPAs specifically because they have demonstrated they have a lot more investment and interest in these kinds of decisions that we're making here today. So I'd like to maybe consider some additional outreach beyond just the CPACs. So I'd like to hear what you might, you know, what you and land might come up with to increase that level of outreach so we ensure we can have maximum penetration in the public about what might be affecting them. And then in terms of that, I'm, thank you Supervisor Natoli for helping flesh that out a little bit with the two-story. That is something that's very concerning to folks. So now, in an NPA, they may have prohibitions on two-story. Well, it may not address the kind of situation we're facing here. Because they were assuming the setbacks were a certain distance. And so now setbacks going down to four feet, they would say, boy, if we had known that, we would have certainly beefed up our prohibition on two-story houses, right? Yeah, that's, you know, that's concerning because I could see how an NPA could be amended to maybe address this. But that's certainly a very, that's a time-consuming process as well, right? Yes. I'd like to think about that, what we could, how we could address that situation, which I could certainly see happening.
And honestly, even if the NPA were, even if we attempted to amend it, we could not do it in a way that would usurp the authority.
Yeah.
That's already been set forth in SB 9. And all of our design standards and things of that nature have to remain objective. If they're not objective, then we run into other problems with legal defensibility.
Okay. Thank you, June.
Thank you, Supervisor Desmond. Supervisor Natoli?
So another question comes to mind is that in the bullet points here and it was outlined SB 9, the owner requesting the lot split must sign an affidavit indicating they will reside on one of the properties for three years. So what's the enforceability? So what if they don't? Who does what? Is the parcel split reversed? Do you have to take the house down? I don't think any of those things are practical. But so, you know, it's kind of like you throw that into the law, but so what? You know, we've dealt with this many occasions on local zoning ordinances. And so what's the force and effect of that? Is there a document that says that in good faith, and I trust people will, you know, and I'm not questioning that people will come in in good faith, but we've seen other situations where it becomes a situation where we got rental houses, we get income streams, and, you know, we get a better offer. And we know that the local government is weak in its ability to enforce, not because they wouldn't, but what's the teeth? So tell me, what's prescribed here and what do we propose to do? So you sign an affidavit. Is it worth the paper it's written on?
Can I defer this to?
Yeah, sorry, June. I'm curious.
So the legislation is silent about the enforcement mechanisms. And we are hoping that the HCD guidance will give us some guidance on that. In the meantime, if the affidavit were signed, there could be a nuisance action filed by one property owner against another. That's a civil action, a potential for that. Possibly a code violation, zoning or county code, potentially. I mean, that, I can't say that with certainty, but that's something that could be explored. But that would probably be the extent of it.
Right. So basically unenforceable. You're going to depend upon the goodwill and the good faith of the parties that seek to do this. And I trust that that will be the case in many cases. But last question I have then relative to the exempt SEQA status. So it's the intent that you will issue the exempt document? They pay for that, or they just don't even have to go through any clearing whatsoever? Because we have a process right now that allows the planning environmental review department to make a determination after doing some initial review of, you know, what's being proposed to certify the exemption. And it's a pretty low-cost document, but it accompanies the request. In this case, SEQA is waived entirely, so there is not even any consideration of that? You just issue the document or you don't even issue a document? It's just presumed to be exempt, so?
The legislation says SEQA does not apply.
Okay.
Period.
So there's, they don't have to check any box or anything out? It's just basically it's, you make your application, no environmental review on any issue that may come up that could be otherwise a part of a SEQA review. As I mentioned earlier, trees or there may be some other issues related to NPA or SPAs. All that basically is foregone. And as long as they meet development standards and other, I mean, we have a tree preservation ordinance on single-family lots.
Right. So again, there's no environmental review under SEQA, but there is a requirement that we can enforce our objective zoning standards and subdivision standards and design standards. So hopefully, the things that you're concerned about would fall within those categories and we will be able to address the concerns in that way.
Okay. All right. Thank you, ma'am. Chair has a solo question.
Thank you, Supervisor Natoli. We do have some public comment on this item by phone. I believe we have two callers so far. Hi caller. Hello caller?
Yes, uh-huh.
Please start your public comment. You have two minutes.
Okay. Is this just recorded because it doesn't look like they're open for a public comments right now?
It could mean that the video you're watching is delayed.
Ah, okay. All right. Thank you. So my name is Martha Dickinson, and I live in an area which is an NPA in Fair Oaks. And I really want to thank the supervisors for voicing a lot of our concerns. One of my main concerns is that, obviously, we have no voice anymore, is what it appears. I understand that there might be objective standards that are applied when the decision is made ministerially. And I would like to know if there is a way, I think Supervisor Desmond brought this up, to modify our NPAs to include more objective standards that could be addressed rather than using just some of the subjective standards that currently exist in. that currently exist in the NPA. And also, in general, I really don't think the people who created this law thought down the road about what this really means to all the communities involved, who now apparently, again, don't consider ourselves urban areas, but now, all of a sudden, we are being thrown into living in a city, which is not at all what we're interested in doing. One other note is that our streets are not built currently. We have no sidewalks, gutters. We have narrow streets. We voted over and over to maintain that, and I would hate to see what would happen when we have the potential of having such a huge increase in density. I've got to hope that most people just don't do this, but I'm sure there are some developers that would be quite interested in it. And I think that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes your public comment.
Okay. Thank you. So, any increasing in square footage for ADUs would come later down the road, basically, but you will move forward with that, with the idea of maybe finding out what this, if there's changes in the standard sizes, and just to make sure that we're making it easy for all parties. And also Supervisor Desmond had a question.
And thank you Chair Frost. Yeah, and on the ADU issue, yeah, that makes sense, what, changing the limitation, lowering it to 800 and ending it at 1,200. I don't have an issue with that. You know, it's funny, to me, I completely agree with the intent of SB9 to find ways to get more housing, which we desperately need, but it seems to me, there are a lot of areas where I would love for the state to come in and provide a more consistent framework for certain things, but I think local land use planning is not one of those areas. I mean, I think this is, the discussion we're having today illustrates the problem with the state doing that. And I think I really want members of the public to understand, this is a state law, and we are, by and large, our hands are tied. We have to implement this, implement it in a way that's consistent with the law, and we'll do what we can to ensure that some of these, I think, sensitivities, characteristics of neighborhoods, some of these specific ordinances, objective standards, we still adhere to those. I do want to, you know, talk about, the caller made the point, and June and you and I had a brief exchange about, you know, if a community wants to go down the path of amending an NPA from kind of more design review, from a design review perspective, not specifically to kind of thwart the intent or objective of SB9, we have to be sensitive to that and maybe ways they can do that. That still allows more, you know, allows these urban lots splits that are consistent with SB9, but tries to impose some design review standards that are consistent with the neighborhood. And I'd certainly like to continue having that discussion. I understand the position you're in. I think that it's better that we affirmatively make a decision on how to proceed, I guess, today, knowing that we can, we can change things. But I certainly would want to include a provision where the CPACs are noticed about any of these changes that are in SB9 lots split. Those are my comments, ma'am.
Thank you Supervisor Desmond. Supervisor Natoli.
Two points. Obviously, this is a foregone when it comes to application of the law, but I want to, just on one of the points made by Supervisor Desmond, as it relates to the NPAs and SPAs, those all were, for the most part, may have had a very organic formation, and that they came from neighborhoods or communities that had an interest. But they went through secret processes, they went through public hearings, and if we're going to entertain, I'm supportive of doing that, and it'll be county-initiated. I don't think that we should say to neighborhood X, well, we can, you know, consider amendments that would be more objective standards, but, you know, that's going to be a fee of X amount of thousands of dollars, and it's going to require a sequoia document. I think we need to get some thought to that, because if we're going to bring this into the fold, because it's the law, and we already have zoning ordinances, which are essentially land use law in this county, then if we're going to, you know, work with neighborhoods to comport our SPAs and NPAs to meet the intent of the law, then I believe it's an obligation of this county. Now, that doesn't come without expense and/or time commitment, and if there are 70 of these, I don't know that there's going to be 70 different communities that are going to want to address this in a more proactive fashion. But I don't think it's just say, well, if you want to amend it, we can do it, but, you know, get your pocketbook out, and guess what? We're going to go through a sequoia consideration on this, because this law doesn't exempt NPAs and SPAs, those land use entitlements and/or overlays, doesn't exempt them. So I think we need to get some thought to that, Chris, and I would, you know, put it before this board, because obviously, it's a decision we'll make, because it will be, you know, we're going to have to absorb that if we choose to do that. It can't be a planning department. And many of these were initiated by the planning department at the time, over the course of decades, and have been adopted into zoning ordinances. So if we're going to look at that, then I would think that, you know, your package needs to come back to us with that discussion, obviously going through the county executive for an analysis of what that might, you know, entails, far as staff work and costs and so forth. But I don't believe that the neighborhoods and the communities that have lived under those code requirements, you know, should necessarily bear the cost of putting in those objective standards that comport with SB9. And then, lastly, I would just say that on the noticing, I think certainly notice to the CPACs, and I would go as far as noticing adjacent property owners. Again, you know, it will be an explanation of what the law is, of what's provided for, and the fact that it's a ministerial action. But it also then defines what, if there are concerns that fall within the umbrella of the planning director's authority under this law, that there is an appeal process, but not to mislead or misguide folks as it relates to, you know, the practicalities of that. So that would be something, obviously, working with council and with the planning department. But I think it's important, because again, if we're going to go forward, and we are, then I think, again, keeping the folks that we immediately represent in this county apprised of how we're going to implement this is important. That's part of the effort to inform and to make it known that this is the law, this is how we're going to implement it, and it's going to be, you know, administered fairly, but there's not a lot of, you know, opportunities to appeal beyond the objective standards that's been talked about here today. So I would suggest that we provide for, as with any parcel map, a notice to folks with clarity regarding what is being requested, and how it will be applied, and, you know, who to contact in the event that they have questions.
Thank you Supervisor Natoli.
Thanks.
I also want to ask if we can, if we are going to move forward with the idea of increasing the maximum size of ADUs. I know we are working on some standard stick-built ADU planning plans, so that people can save money on their permitting. If we can, I don't know if it's, if this is a timely thing. I think we went out for an RFP, and there was one person who responded, and they are working on those standard plans right as we speak. So can we make them aware that, because we don't want our standard plans to be less than the max, and we want at least one that's the max anyway, I think.
Sure. I'll check into that.
Okay.
Just to, just to, as a, to make sure that I'm clear on the direction that was provided regarding the noticing. We talked about a couple of different options, one being that would track with our short-term rental permits, where we provide notice to, you had mentioned Supervisor Natoli, adjacent property owners. For short-term rentals, we notice property owners within 300 feet of the subject site. So wondering if that is tracking with the recommendation, as well as the notification is provided at the time of approval of the application. And so I want to make sure that I'm clear, as we adjust our, just our procedures, that we're clear about the point of notification being either at application being filed, or at the time of approval, which is how we handle short-term rental permits, is at the point of approval.
Okay. I guess I would respond, Madam Chair, just, and maybe others want to weigh in too, but it seemed to me that with parcel maps, we would give notice early on. This is an expedited processing of that. This is different than the short-term rentals. This is creation of additional units, for which used to will be, obviously, dwellings. And I guess I would provide early notice. That would be my preference, that, you know, not as you do in short-term rentals, but once the, you know, approval's been given, and then you've got X amount of days, assuming you get the mail on time and so forth, to, if you want to exercise some appeal, or anything else, to have that notice. Parcel maps are processed in a way that provides, you know, we use 500-foot for parcel maps. Is that right?
That is correct.
And this is a parcel map. So I guess I would fall back to what, the way we apply that versus the way you're doing the short-term rentals. That would be my preference. I don't know what the majority of the board feels.
I'd agree with that. That would be my preference as well.
Did you have some more Supervisor Desmond?
I just want to ask a question regarding this, though, on noticing the CPAC and the neighbors. Regardless whether we notice them or not, the law with SB9 is going to prevail. And so there would not be an appeal opportunity if neighbors did not like it, and it would not be, it would be more like a work, a notice or a workshop through the CPAC, but it would, there would not be recourse or an appeal process, because the law would provide the, it would be a property rights issue if it came back to us and someone spent whatever the money is to appeal it. Do you understand what I'm saying? Are we creating?
Yeah.
If we're going to notice it, we may want to let people know that, because if they get really upset about someone doing something in their neighborhood, but there is no recourse, they should know upfront, there's not recourse.
And that's why, as I mentioned, the short-term rental, at the initial implementation of the short-term rental permits, we were noticing at the time that an application or a permit was requested. And because we got into a lot of those questions from the public about their concerns about the permit and wanting to appeal the permit, we moved to noticing after it had been approved. In this case, there would not be a CPAC workshop. It would just be a notification to the CPAC that an application had been filed. If there was an appeal filed, and there can be an appeal, but it would be very limited in terms of our application, or either the application of SB9 requirements to the project, or perhaps a condition that's applied. And again, the conditions that are applied are very limited under SB9. But if there was a contested condition from an applicant, that could be subject to, subject to an appeal. But it would be, as I mentioned, a very limited appeal-type process, and it would not make its way to the board. It would stop at the Board of Zoning Appeals.
So can we make, can we send out an announcement to all the CPACs as relates to what you just stated, so that they know what's coming when it comes?
Absolutely. And I mentioned that we are going to be doing a series of meetings with the CPACs, beginning in January, early January, to inform them about the new process for these requests.
Okay. Do we need to vote on this, or do you just need direction? Need to vote?
Yes.
Yes, we would need to vote on the introduction of the ordinance.
All right.
Madam Chair?
I want to just ask to the point, because there's been some conversation here that, and I think Chris was seeking some guidance, and we can embed it in the motion, if that's what we choose to do. But, you know, kind of after the fact, to me, you know, short-term rental is, you know, certainly has implications, and I know you've got, I think it was pending an appeal, at least there was one. I heard from a resident in Supervisor Desmond's district that they were concerned about that. But in this case, to your point, Madam Chair, and I think, you know, making it clear in the early notice, you know, so people can ask their questions, and it may, you know, result in certainly some frustrations, but I think rather than saying, well, there it is, county just, again, just approves stuff, and then tells us after the fact, and, you know, the clock's ticking if, in fact, they were moved to try to file an appeal, which I think will be very rare. So I, again, I would go back, I think it needs to be early notice. And again, that way, there's some feedback, and it's, fits within the parameters of what we're allowed to administer. That can be useful or helpful. Again, not all the good ideas come from this dais or from, you know, professional staff. There's some folks, a lot of times, that are thoughtful, and they may work with their neighbors and so forth, that could get, but once something's been approved, that pretty much fixes not just the parcel map, but obviously, the proposal for where the building envelopes and the objective standards have been mentioned many times here this morning. So I would suggest that that might be a little more rigorous, but I think it could be helpful in trying to work our way through this with neighborhoods, but certainly property owners' desire to pursue this, so.
I'm a little confused now, because Supervisor Natoli, you're talking about early notice, which I totally concur with. I'm under the impression from council and from Mr. Puhuli that this is gonna, there won't be sequoia, there will be set standards, they'll, it'll be, there won't be a process at the CPAC, so early notice would not, there wouldn't be a review of the project and...
No, that's true.
Comments, so...
But they can inquire. There'll be information that this is being proposed.
Okay.
They may engage one of us or all of us in that conversation, and we'll be the messengers. That's part of our responsibility. But it will allow potentially for some dialogue within the neighborhood framework.
Okay.
If people choose to do that. But again, it's not guided by us in the sense, to your point. We're not, I'm not, it suggests we set forth a process that has CPAC review, but notice to the CPAC and to the neighbors, and then, you know...
That it's coming, not after it's, you're saying you want notice before it happens, not after?
Yeah. That's my take on it. Others may see it differently, but that's the way I believe.
I see it that way. And if you want to embed that in a motion, Supervisor Natoli, I'd certainly support it.
And I don't mean to belabor the issue, but just so that I'm clear on direction, the notice to the CPACs would be a written notice. It would not be an informational item at the CPACs, but it would be a notice to the CPACs, similar to what we're going to send out to the adjacent property owners within 500 feet of the subject site.
So it would be up to the CPAC to agendize that and mention it, or just would be a public record that people would...
It would just be a pub...
If they're watching the public record, they'll see it.
No, they could, I would just say, I guess they could request to have a presentation, you know, or an informational packet. You're going to send out a notice. There's going to be an application, and, you know, it's being processed ministerially, so maybe a little challenging to navigate. But I guess if they asked to at least have the item for discussion, it's not an advisory matter that they're going to be able to, you know, there's no process to apply it to.
I don't know if that does anything, though. It's, if there's no recourse, it just creates work.
I think if they want to do that, education for the residents who are affected by this, that does have benefit. And there were a lot of times when I was on a CPAC, just knowing about something before it happens is important, especially something new. And, but again, maybe they would have to be, they would have to be proactive in requesting maybe planning staff come and give a presentation, maybe educate folks about why this is happening.
I think certainly in the early days of this, it's going to be more critical, or maybe ongoing as well, so.
Okay. Are we clear on the motion, Chris?
Yes.
Okay. So we, I believe Supervisor Natoli made the motion with the changes, notice to CPAC and neighbors.
Right. And moving the introduction of the ordinances, first reading, and then with the understanding you're going to be returning to us with a more comprehensive package. And lastly, I would just say that, you know, a discussion relative to the neighborhood preservation and its special planning area applications, and how we might handle that going forward as well. So, okay, that's my motion.
Thank you Supervisor Natoli. And Chair will second. And please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item number three is to adopt a resolution improving the groundwater sustainability plans for the Casuma Solano and South American Subbasin. plans for the Casuma-Solano and South American sub-basin.
Good morning.
Good morning, Carrie. Happy holidays. I have a presentation that should come up.
I'm sorry, they're switching the presentations in the back, so no worries.
So my name is Carrie Schmitz. I'm with the Department of Water Resources. I'm here today to ask your board to adopt groundwater sustainability plans for county groundwater sustainability areas. Linda Dorn was originally supposed to do this presentation. She's not able to make it today, but she is on the phone in case there are any questions of a technical nature that I can answer. So I don't want to go into great detail about the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. You all are very well-versed in it by this point. The legislation was implemented in 2015, creating or empowering local agencies to form groundwater sustainability agencies, or GSAs, in order to manage groundwater sustainably. So the GSAs have until 2042 to demonstrate sustainable management in the basins. The county is the presumptive manager if the county decides to accept that responsibility, which your board did in 2017. So you are a groundwater, a GSA for several areas in the county. Failure to comply results in the State Water Resource Control Board intervention. And SIGMA requires that GSAs in each basin adopt the Groundwater Sustainability Plan, or GSP, prior to submittal to the state in January of 2022. And this is why we're here today. So a groundwater sustainability plan is a, it's a technical regulatory document that really lays out the characteristics of groundwater basins and lays out a plan for how to manage the basin sustainably. It contains identification of undesirable results. Undesirable results are listed on the, on the slide, lowering groundwater levels, reduction of storage, seawater intrusion, degraded water quality, land subsidence, and surface water depletion. The GSP also contains a technical analysis of groundwater conditions in the basin. It identifies any projects or management actions that might be required to bring the basin into sustainability. And it requires a description of funding and also governance to implement the GSP. So the GSPs lay out a 20-year timeline to bring the basin into sustainability. So this, you've seen this, this timeline before. Just the yellow circle just kind of shows you where we are. We are at the point where we're adopting the groundwater sustainability plans for the various basins. You'll see that we're submitting them January 31, 2022. And beyond that is implementation. And fun note, implementation starts right away. The first annual report is due in April following the January submittal of the GSP. So this is just a map showing the various GSAs within Sacramento County. There are four groundwater basins, and I'll just highlight the blue areas because those are the county GSA areas. We have management responsibility in a little bit in the South American sub-basin, in the Casuma sub-basin, and in the Solano sub-basin. So the next few slides highlight just little snippets, information about each of the GSPs that we're asking you to adopt today. In the Casuma GSP, the Slough House Resource Conservation District GSA has stepped up to be the plan manager. The governance is laid out in the Casuma Groundwater Authority, JPA, which has been passed. And we've actually had two meetings of the Casuma Groundwater Authority. And Supervisor Natoli, thank you for your participation in those. Groundwater conditions in the basin, there's a little bit of a challenge. Currently overdraft is about 2,700 acre-feet per year. And if you factor in climate change, the overdraft is about 10,000 acre-feet per year. So in the Casuma, we have some work to do. The GSAs have some work to do. The projects identified in the plan include voluntary fallowing, increased subsurface flows from the Harvest Water Project, and there are some partnership opportunities regarding groundwater banking with SAFCA. Implementation funding comes from groundwater fees that were passed by the GSAs in 2021. And the GSPs must be approved by each GSA board, as I mentioned. The Solano GSP, the plan manager will be the Solano GSA. Governance is being developed as we speak. They're looking at an MOU. Groundwater conditions are better in the Solano basin. They have a groundwater surplus of about 1,000 acre-feet per year, and that decreases slightly when you consider climate change. The projects there, the plan has identified some projects, but given groundwater conditions in the basin, they don't foresee having to implement any projects unless conditions worsen. And the fee program is being developed right now. And in the South American GSP, Sacramento Central Groundwater Authority, or SCGA, is stepping up to be the plan manager. There's an MOU that's being developed now. Groundwater conditions in the basin, there's about a 1,000 acre-feet-per-year overdraft condition, and with climate change, that goes to about 6,000 acre-feet-per-year overdraft. The projects in the basin include demand management. The Harvest Water Program certainly has a positive impact if that project moves forward. Enhanced conjunctive use among the water purveyors in the basin, which includes a CWA, and a recharge project by Oma Chumney-Hartnell Water District along the Casuma River. Implementation funding comes from fees that have been adopted by a number of the GSAs. There are a few GSAs that still need to develop their, their funding mechanism. So there were a number of public review and public notice steps that were required in SIGMA. They're listed on this slide. Those all were met, those requirements were met. And all of this needed to be done prior to the January 31 submittal date. So this slide just kind of lays out what happens after you submit the GSP to State Department of Water Resources. Best solution, best outcome is it's approved by the state. They can ask you to tweak it, make minor changes, and then you move forward with implementation. The state can also determine that the GSP is incomplete. And if that is the case, they issue direction to modify the GSP. You get 180 days to respond to that, and then it is reviewed again by DWR. It's either, they either determine that your deficiencies are corrected or not corrected, and then you head down the approved or inadequate path. If it's determined inadequate, then Department of Water Resources and State Water Resource Control Board get together and figure out next steps. It could lead to State Water Resources Control Board intervention, which hopefully none of the GSPs that we're considering today will end up there. So today's recommended action is for the County Board of Supervisors and the Sacramento County Water Agency Board of Directors jointly acting as the governing body for the Sacramento County Groundwater Sustainability Agency, adopt the resolution approving the groundwater sustainability plans for the Casuma, Solano, and South American sub-basins prior to submittal to State Department of Water Resources. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. I do want to just, while I'm up here, and I would like to acknowledge that this is a pretty significant milestone for the county and for everybody that's been involved in groundwater for the past six years. It's been six years. So I really want to acknowledge all of the GSAs within the county. They all stepped up and have done a great job implementing this program. It's not easy. We've had excellent technical consultants and resources along the way. We've had great facilitation help. We've had great public outreach help because public outreach is so important in this process. We've also had fantastic input from the public. And those, those folks who actually donated their time and sat through groundwater meetings and participated in development of the GSP have, have made the GSPs better. So we're grateful to them. The Water Forum, State DWR, all really helped. State grants funded the majority of this work, and we wouldn't have been able to do it without the state. I'd also like to thank county staff, Linda Dorn and Darrell Eck have been rock stars for me in this process. And EMD, County Council, we all figured out SIGMA together, so very grateful for those, for their work. And I'd like to thank your board for the work, the policy direction, the hard decisions that you've had to make, I think, have helped us get where we are today. So thank you very much. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Carrie. And Supervisor Natoli has questions.
Yeah, not so much questions, just comments. I would add to the list of thank you, certainly to Carrie Schmitz, obviously is doing the presentation today, and certainly Michael Peterson. And she mentioned Linda Dorn and Darrell Eck, and there's been any number of folks that have worked on this, but I know you've dedicated a good deal of your professional working days and nights to, to this effort, Carrie. So thank you for your engagement and involvement and, and work. And certainly Michael and Linda, I know, have been part of that, and Darrell and his role as well, and other members of the Water Resources staff. And as Carrie said, certainly we've been at this now into the sixth year, and, you know, there have been some friction along the way, some, some tough issues to take on, but I think what we have before us today, obviously, we're, I know that when we had a workshop back in 2015, 16, you know, this member expressed concern that that timeline was short and how are we going to do this? And funding was a question, and certainly thankful that we were able to receive state grants. And again, we took the lead, the county, in working with our partners to pull that money down and obviously put some additional funding in from the county and working with the Water Forum. So a lot of, a good, solid work, I think, it positions us well, and hopefully that, as you showed in that chart, that we will receive the appreciation and hopefully the acceptance and approval of our respective plans as we go forward with the submittal to the state. And again, I know that they've tracked this work and have been, you know, involved at different levels, and, but again, tremendous amount of leadership by the County Water Resources team, so thank you so much. And I would just ask very quickly, the, we have the governance structure in place for the Casuma sub-basin, there is a governance structure for South America, and it's been talked about, obviously, maybe how that might be reconfigured. But with the Solano, what, we were talking about MOU, so how is the county to be represented? Because you have a good segment of the southern part of the delta that's in the county GSA as a part of the Solano sub-basin. And I think the good news there was is it looks like they're, the overdraft is non-existent currently, and even with climate change, it might be minimal. In fact, you know, part of the challenges there is not so much the groundwater, is this is the surface water that, you know, is ever-present in our riverine system and certainly streams and rivers that constitute at least a segment of county portion of the delta. So the, when will we see the governance on that? Because I think that representation, to the point you made, local engagement to representation is important. So when will we see that guidance?
And I can't give you a date.
Okay.
But it is being worked on now. We're negotiating, voting, and talking about the fee program. So there's a lot of work going on right now. I would imagine that in the spring, early spring, we'll have something before this board.
Okay, so you'll come back to this board relative to our participation, ongoing in representation there? And then lastly, just to the fees, in a lot of cases, those fees were adopted for one year and provide some revenue source that will, you know, certainly provide resources for the work that's ongoing. And as Carrie said, the implementation will become almost immediate. But this whole issue as it relates to fees and how they're fairly applied and under what process we would consider doing that, certainly for the county GSA, but for all the GSAs, there's a good body of work that still lies ahead. And it was evident even yesterday at the discussion at the Casuma's sub-basin governing body, JPA. So, but with that, I would just, again, express thanks. Thank you, Carrie, and certainly Michael and both in the audience. Thank you, Linda, on the phone. I know Linda's been integral to a lot of this, and took a lot of work to get here. It's a lot of work that lies ahead, but I, you made it on time and certainly within budget, and those are high kudos for any project that we take on. So again, thank you so much. So I would move the item unless there's, I don't have this public comment, Madam Chair, so if you want any public comment, but I'm prepared to move the item when we're ready.
We do not have public comment on this item. And I did hear a second from Supervisor Kennedy. And I want to thank you, Carrie and Linda, and everyone for all the work on this over time. It seemed insurmountable at the time, but we're here, so this is great. Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item number four is a public hearing to authorize participation by the Sacramento County Water Agency in the California Municipal Finance Authority's Bond Opportunities for Land Development Program and the California Statewide Community Development Authority's Statewide Community Infrastructure Program for Community Facility Districts and related items.
Good morning. Michael Peterson, Director of Water Resources. What we're asking for you today is to authorize the agency to participate in these two state programs for financing new infrastructure with development, the BOLD program, and this, and to modify the skip program to allow CFDs to be included. In August, the County Board of Supervisors did authorize participation in BOLD, so we're simply following suit for the agency, in particular to allow Zone 41 water supply impact fees to be included in those programs.
Okay, great. This is exciting. I do not have any supervisors in the queue with questions, Michael, and I'm not sure if we have any public comment on this item. We do not.
We do not have any public comment for this item.
Okay, well, this seems pretty routine and pretty exciting. So do we, we have a motion from Supervisor Desmond and a second by Supervisor Kennedy. Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
At this time, I'll open the public hearing. We do not have any public comments, so I'll close the public hearing. And we have a motion for approval by Supervisor Desmond, a second by Supervisor Kennedy. Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Next item, please.
Item number five is the award of contract 4520 Poppy Ridge Groundwater Treatment Plant, Phase Two Project, in the amount of $6,395,930 to Anvil Builders, Inc.
Good morning, still, barely. My name's David Bolin. I'm the manager of the Design Section for the Department of Water Resources, and we're here to present our recommendation regarding the contract number 4520 Poppy Ridge Groundwater Treatment Plant, Phase Two Project Award. First off, I need to apologize to the board, need to apologize to the board on an oversight that I had regarding some protest letters from Myers &amp; Sons LLC. Attachment four of the board letter had protest letters from other bidders, but I overlooked, including theirs. Those have been provided to the board.
We don't have sound all of a sudden.
Hello?
If you could speak into the two microphones, thank you.
I think it went off on you. I don't know, though.
Testing.
Yeah, I think you're back.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll step back. So I needed to apologize to the board on the oversight of not including Myers &amp; Sons' two letters in attachment four. That was my mistake. So those letters were received by the department. They were reviewed with us and County Council. They were reviewed with us and County Council, Bill Burke here. So, they were taken into account when we made our recommendation determination. It was just omitted in the board letter attachment. So, we're presenting this item to you today to seek your approval to award the contract for the Poppy Ridge Groundwater Treatment Plant, Phase Two Project. The project will upgrade the plant and equip two off-site wells. The new wells will allow SCWA to support demand for recent and anticipated development, to strengthen its drought resiliency, and improve operational flexibility. It's critical for SCWA to equip these wells now to prepare for another possible drought year that will certainly strain SCWA's groundwater supply system. On October 14th, 2021, we received six bids for the project, with Myers &amp; Sons LLC being the apparent low bidder. We received several bid protest letters from the bidders, which are included in the aforementioned attachment four. After extensive review with County Council and County Contract Section, SCWA determined the low bid from Myers &amp; Sons LLC was non-responsive, and the second low bid from Anvil Builders, Incorporated, was the lowest responsive, responsible bid. SCWA opted to pursue awarding the bid to Anvil Builders rather than going down the option of rejecting and rebid due to concerns about the likely cost increase from going out to bid again and the certain schedule impacts that will occur that would prevent us from having any wells online this summer, with our concerns about the upcoming drought, likely drought conditions. So, as a result, SCWA is recommending that the board take the following two actions. Action item one is accept and award the lowest responsive, responsible bid from Anvil Builders, Incorporated, the base bid only, in the amount of $6,395,930 for the construction of the Poppy Ridge Groundwater Treatment Plant, Phase Two Project. Recommended action item two is to authorize the Director of Department of Water Resources to execute a contract with Anvil Builders, Incorporated, in accordance with Resolution Number WA 2364. With that, that concludes my introduction and comments. Happy to answer questions you may have. We also have Bill Burke here from County Council to answer questions as well.
Thank you, David. And we do have some questions. Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, thank you, Matt, sure. Thanks, David. And first, thank you for acknowledging the omission. I know that when we were contacted prior to the item being scheduled to be heard last week, it became apparent in trying to find the information that it wasn't included, so thank you for acknowledging that. Obviously, they're represented here today and maybe others as well. I wanted to, before we got into, obviously, there's some substance here as it relates to the bid protest and discussion that we'll probably hear from some of the presenters and certainly the information included in the packet, but I want to go for a moment to the statement, the estimated project costs, which was attachment number six. And when I look at that, the construction costs, and obviously, the engineering estimate here was for, I believe it was for six, somewhere close to $6.4 million for the actual construction costs. Is that accurate, Dave?
Correct.
Okay. But then I see on top of that, and again, we're talking about equipping two wells that were drilled some years ago, and obviously, will have to be fully developed with the equipment and all the pertinent structures and transmission facilities and treatment facilities. But when I look at the cost that the county is putting on top of the construction cost, I see 332,000 for engineering, 385,000 for O&amp;M support, the equipment, obviously, is 850,000, $640,000 for construction inspection costs, and then, under other estimated costs, I see $418,000 for consultants. I guess I need to have some explanation. Again, you know, we've had this debate many times or discussion before this board about soft costs and so forth. How do we get to, for one, and maybe it's not for you to answer, $640,000 estimated cost for inspections? Those are county inspectors. If you did personnel years, that's a, and we got these online by the summertime, are you going to have folks there day and night? To me, that seems excessive. And then we have consultants on top of engineers at almost three-quarters of a million, or more than three-quarters of a million dollars. So, again, I don't mean to catch you by surprise, but those numbers, beyond what we're going to talk about as it relates to the actual construction, just seem to really jump off the page to me, so.
Okay. So, the construction inspection cost is approximately 10% of construction, and that's a fairly typical estimate for a project, capital project. So, as far as the engineering costs and some of this O&amp;M support, we're actually building two off-site wells completely out, as well as modifying the treatment plant, and the treatment plant is going to be modified in anticipation of two additional wells to come online with a separate project down the road as well. So, some of those costs are buried into there. So, it's, we're building the entire improvements at the plant and two off-site wells. When we initially put this out to bid, we had a base bid that included this work, then two alternates, and each alternate included a off-site well as well. So, this plant work covers for all four future wells, the two on the base bid and those two alternates, and then the other costs, such as the consultant engineers. We require assistance with electrical design, hydro geo design, just, it's specialties that are outside of staff.
So, $400,000 worth for two wells?
And the plant upgrades.
And the plant upgrades.
Correct.
And if you took the base bids with the alternates, those all came in at 10 million plus, and if I use your equation, then the construction inspection cost would have jumped to a million dollars?
Likely, yes. We'd have four separate sites. Construction, our goal is to have one well online this summer. Construction will actually go through till 2023 with this base bid. Doing two additional wells would have added another six to eight months, so it's an effective a two-year.
So, do you assign inspectors there full-time, to stay there all day long, watching the contract? I mean, I don't, that to me is, you know, 10% or not, that's a lot of money for things that you spent, $400,000 for Sultan's design, you've got $330,000 in-house engineering, coordinate this, and we're going to have someone, and inspections are important, but you've got contractors that, we're going to talk about qualifications and so forth, to spend a million dollars for what's being in this overall package, but $640,000. I guess I need to understand, how do you assign those costs? I mean, unless you have inspectors on those sites and stand, I guess, shoulder to shoulder while the contractors are doing the work, and you're going to do it all in a short amount of time. That's the other thing. You talk about 2023 for the entire project, I guess I'm having a hard time accepting that number, whether it's standard or not. I mean, again, you're going to, because you're not taking the base bids, I mean, you're not taking alternates in any way, you're going to do the base, and that's still $640,000.
Correct. And again, that's our estimate based on past experience for construction, is a 10% cost estimate for inspection is about on par for what we encounter. This is a very detailed project. They will not be there 24 hours a day, but getting the one well on by 2023, that's our push there. The whole job's going to actually go for over a year.
Again, this doesn't accommodate the whole project, at least, I guess it does for the base bid.
Correct.
But you've spent money upfront to design it properly, to have the complexity of this done in a way that obviously the bid package reflects the work. You have, you know, a host of contractors that, you know, meet the, you know, the qualifications, and obviously, we're going to talk about what we do with that. I guess I would just maybe turn to Ann and David. I just, to me, this number really comes off the page to me for what's being encountered here, particularly when we've spent three-quarters of a million engineering and design consultants, and then we're going to spend twice, you know, a similar amount, near the comparable amount, just to have folks stand by to make sure the work's done by qualified contractors. That just, it seems to be, to getting way out of bounds for what we're being asked to do here. We're not building a whole new transmission system, you're going to adapt the plant, I see Michael's come up here. I'm having a hard time with this number, Michael, I really am.
No, I understand that. And as David said, that is the estimate, that is the estimate based on what we actually see with prior projects. What we would not want to do is underestimate those soft costs and, you know, sort of understate what they might be. We're trying to be as accurate as possible in projecting those costs. Again, it is based on the costs that we find for inspection for actual projects we've taken, you know, through the construction process with inspection, with design, and that is the best thing we can put forward, and we don't, we don't, it's not a budget that they say, go spend $640,000 for inspection, but we have to account for that in our budgeting process because that is a realistic estimate for that section of the soft costs.
Could you help me understand what the personnel assignment would be to get to $640,000?
That, I don't know what, for this project, if it would be three senior inspectors and two field inspectors and one, you know, principal, I don't have that specific breakdown, but this is, again, part of how we're doing this is to estimate that piece of cost. There may be some variation from one project to the next, but other than artificially lowering that estimate and then trying to restrict the inspection staff, that's going to compromise the project execution, so we have to make sure that we're providing in our overall budget the ability to pay for that cost. Again, each project is different, but this is not based on anything that we haven't seen. Actual projects come through, 10% is the appropriate factor to assume for those costs. Now, we can ask for an estimate from CMID.
Yeah, I think it's important, again, you know, because, again, we already have wells that are drilled, you have to equip them, develop them, you've got a complex project if you talk to, with the contractors, but we spent a lot of money in advance to address those things, and you have qualified contractors bidding the project, we have to oversee that, but $600, nearly $50,000 to do that, and that's only for a portion of the work, not for everything that's been talked about here. And David, we'd be talking about a million dollars of inspection cost if you had the alternates in here. That's just, that seems excessive to me. Again, I get it, maybe that's the number you use, you're saying that's what you would allow for in the budget. I guess I'd like to see how people would comport to put that work together as a part of this project, particularly on the timeline, if it's compressed timeline you're working with, to get that many personnel hours assigned to the project, you're not asking contractors to work 24/7 on this project, to David's point. It just, you know, it seems like a lot of money chewed up on the soft costs in that particular category, and so I appreciate you trying to address it, but I offer one, still not satisfied as it relates to that particular item. And again, I don't want to take away from the conversation we're going to have here about whom I do the work, because I got to get to that point first, but I am really concerned that on this, we get nearly $3 million in soft costs.
Okay, well, we, again, we can provide some information from CMID.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks. Those are my questions right now. We'll have some presentations, I want to talk about some of the issues that we've seen in some of the correspondence, but.
Okay, sure. Did you have something? Okay, okay. At this time, I do not, was your presentation completed?
Yes, yes, it is.
Thank you. We do have some public comment in chambers, so we'll take public comment at this time and then come back for deliberation. So, at this time, I'm calling Christopher Colkey. I think there's a button on the side if you want to, oh, actually, I think you're the right height for that, so.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Fantastic. So, my name is Chris Colkey. I'm an attorney at Downey Brand. I'm counsel for Myers &amp; Sons, and I'm here with C.C. Myers, who's here today. He's the founder of Myers &amp; Sons, and I'm obviously here to speak about contract 4520 and ask that it be awarded to Myers &amp; Sons. Now, Myers has an outstanding resume of experience and a track record of great work in the industry. It's known for timely completing projects and on time. Unlike Anvil, which is the tentative awardee of this contract, which is based in San Francisco, Myers &amp; Sons is based right here in Sacramento. To give an example of something that Myers &amp; Sons has worked on before, contract number 4394, that's the Winding Way Bridge Chicago Creek Bridge Replacement Project. I believe it was on the agenda last week, I think it was number 13. Myers &amp; Sons worked with the county cooperatively to complete that project, so it does have experience, of course, with the county completing projects. Now, Myers was the lowest responsible, responsive bidder, and it can perform this work for $300,000 cheaper, more than that in fact, than the tentative awardee, Anvil. And we respect County Council's decision to award the contract to Anvil, but there was one reason pointed out in the agenda for why Myers &amp; Sons should not receive the contract, and that was because Myers did not list the subcontractor percentages in the bid document. And so, I want to speak a little bit about that, and whether or not it's material, and it's our position that it's not material, that Myers &amp; Sons was not required to do that. I wouldn't be up here challenging this decision today unless I believed the contract award to Myers could be defended, and it would be defended by Myers. We, Downey Brand, have defended challenges in the past. We don't anticipate one here, but we could defend one if it came to that. Now, the bid instructions did not require that Myers &amp; Sons list the bid percentages. It just said that Myers shall, is the word that was used, list the name, location of the place of business, CSLB number, type of work each subcontractor would perform, and the DIR registration number. Myers &amp; Sons complied with all of these instructions. The form, the bid form, however, had a line for the bid percentages, but the bid instructions themselves didn't require that this be filled out. So, strictly speaking, there was no irregularity in the bid. Now, putting that aside, the county can waive minor irregularities. We certainly don't want to be in a position, of course, and this is why the law is the way it is, where losing bidders can calm through bids and find some minor technicality in an attempt to be able to achieve the award. That obviously wouldn't serve the county, it wouldn't serve the public, especially here where we have a contract that can be done for over $300,000 less than Anvil can do it, as stated in its bid. Now, the agenda stated that this alleged irregularity could not be waived because it was material, since Myers could have withdrawn its bid based on it, but that assumes Myers' failure to include the percentages was material. The bid instructions, as discussed, didn't require that they be listed, and to determine materiality, the question really must be asked, what impact did the omitted percentages actually have? None. It didn't affect the bid price, it didn't affect the work that would be, that would get, the fact that great work would get performed. I think that the requirement that the lists, that the percentages be listed in the bid, really, I would surmise derives from the Subletting and Subcontracting Fair Practices Act, which requires that subcontractors be listed who are performing in excess of one-half of 1% of the total bid amount. Myers, of course, disclosed all the subcontractors who fit within that category, so it really served its purpose by listing those subcontractors, which itself was an implication that it, those subcontractors were performing at least one-half of 1% of the total bid amount. So, again, I want to say I respect, we respect County Council's decision in the agenda, but an award to Myers, a local company founded here in Sacramento, would be over $300,000 less for the same work, and again, I'm very confident an award to Myers could be defended if it came to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I wonder if, David, if there's someone here who can speak to the, how the review process took place, and.
We have Bill Burke here, who represents the Water Agency and will respond.
Good afternoon, Mr. Burke.
Hello, Bill Burke, Deputy County Counsel. I assisted DWR in reviewing this bid process. So, in your agenda materials, you should have a copy. So in your agenda materials, you should have a copy of what's shown on the screen right now. That is Myers &amp; Sons, it's one page out of Myers' bid submission, that is the subcontractor listing. And I'll start off by saying that the county's standard construction specifications require expressly that bidders submit information regarding the portion of work that their subs are going to do for each work item. That's where, that's one place where the requirement is expressly stated, and of course, all of our bidders are expected to be familiar with our standard specs. So this is our standard form for subcontractors, it's got a number of columns, you identify the subcontractor, you identify the work item, and you can see here, it's the, it's the second column from the left, that is the column to list the percentage of work that the sub is going to do. And as you can see here on Myers' form, it's blank on the first, I think, six rows until the last one, where it says the sub will do, well, the number 100 is listed there. And then there's one more row on the next page where it's also, they filled it in with the number 100. So that's a non-responsive bid. That's an omission, the information that's requested, it isn't there. One thing that Myers' counsel neglected to mention when reading off the instructions on that form, is that it does ask for the portion of work that the sub is going to So every other bidder provided this information. I would also state that it's a form, it's intuitive, or I think fairly, fairly clear that there is a column with a heading on top that requests certain information, I don't think it's too hard to understand that there's something required to be there. So we have these omissions in the information, this blank form, or partially blank form, there's the number 100 at the bottom. Staff and I looked at that, tried to figure out what it might mean, was it a reference to, if you combined all of the work items, it's 100% of the job? We don't know. And we're not required to figure out what that means, and you're not required to figure out what that means. It's just, it's non-responsive, and you have every right to reject that bid on that basis. That should be the end of it. The only reason you would go further is to consider whether or not you'd want to waive that omission, waive that error, that irregularity in the bid, and accept this bid. And then that gets you into an analysis of whether or not you can do that. You can't always, you can't waive any irregularity. State law is pretty clear that you can't waive an irregularity where to do so would give the bidder an unfair competitive advantage, and the courts tell us that a bidder does get an unfair competitive advantage if they are able to withdraw their bid without forfeiting their bid bond. We've got a case out of our Third District Court of Appeal here called Valley Crest Landscape versus City of Davis, which establishes a general rule that where a contractor, where a bidder changes the information about their subcontractor percentages, at that point, that would allow them to withdraw their bid and give them that unfair competitive advantage. And when that happens, the awarding body can't waive that error. So let me talk about what happened after this. We're required by law, when there is a non-responsive bid, we have to notify the bidder that they were non-responsive, and allow them to submit materials on the issue of nonresponsiveness. What that basically means is they have to explain to the awarding body what that information means, if the awarding body is going to consider waiving the error. So what we got was a, another form, a corrected form, that filled in all the blanks, and it changed the subcontractor percentage on that bottom line and the next line, it wasn't 100%, it was, it was much less, something in the 10, 10 to 20% range. And that creates a problem for you, for the county, for us, because we've got this case out there that says when the bidder changes their subcontractor percentages, we can't waive the irregularity. So there's that. I don't think you want to get involved in that, you don't have to get involved in that at all, there's no obligation for you to waive the irregularity. The simple way forward is to find that it's non-responsive, and award to the second low bidder.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Natoli.
Thank you, Bill. So in addition to what you just described, we've also, in the attachments, again, I can't recall, at least in recent memory, where we've actually had this kind of chain reaction of the subsequent bidder in the lineup protesting the award for everyone that was ahead of them, at least on the price piece of this. And we've got four letters of communication, obviously Myers represented here today, but we have Clark Brothers, Mountain Cascade, and Anvil, all arguing, obviously, Anvil is being, is recommended by staff, taking your analysis, and obviously Water Resources' analysis. But I'm curious about, what about the other submittals that then protest the award to Anvil, and that then would also protest the award to the third low bidder, and challenging the responsiveness and/or aspects of their bid forms? I trust you looked at all those as well?
I did, yeah. And the critiques that were made regarding Anvil's bid, one was the allegation that Anvil's bid was unbalanced, which basically means weighted towards the alternates. I discussed that with staff because they have a better sense of the project costs. They did not feel that the pricing of the alternates compared to the base bid by Anvil was unbalanced. And in any event, what they're asking you to do is only award the base bid and not award the alternates, so it's a bit of a moot point. There was another allegation regarding Anvil, the same allegation that, that Anvil didn't fill in the subcontractor percentages. I think what that, what that other contractor was seeing was that there are some, there is some information crossed out in Anvil's form, in the subcontractor form, and there's a couple of lines that they didn't need to use, because they crossed out one of the rows, but if you look at it closely, there is a percentage provided for each subcontractor listed. And I, I think those were the two, yeah, the two arguments made about Anvil's bid. I reviewed the protests, I looked at Anvil's bid, and I found that it was, that it's okay.
Okay. So just a point, I mean, I don't know that it was pointed out, but this isn't the first time, obviously, we've had protests before this, this county, and we have to weigh the option, but we always reserve the right to reject all bids, and then to go back, go back out. And there are implications to that, certainly, staff spoke to you at relative time, and obviously, some urgency, but we have that ability today. If, in sorting through all this, we chose not to support, the recommendation is outlined, we have the ability to reject bids and to rebid it, is that correct?
Legally, yes. And you may get another round of bids that have issues, and we'll be right back here again.
Right, I get that, and price, you know, adjustments and so forth, but I just, I wanted to be sure, because I know that's been pointed out many times in the past, that it doesn't come without implications, and to your point, could result in another series of protests, but, okay, thanks. That's the questions I had.
Thank you, Supervisor Natoli. Supervisor Desmond.
Thanks, Bill, and I don't know which I addressed this to. I mean, so first of all, I'm just curious, why did we decide not to look at the base bid plus the alternates? Why did we ultimately make that decision, just to rely on awarding the bid based on the base bid? And excuse my ignorance, just because I haven't, I'm not as familiar with the project, obviously, as Supervisor Natoli.
David Boland, again, so we, through our consultants, had received information that bids were skyrocketing with all of the pandemic issues going on, material shortages and whatnot, so we tried to couch the bid in a way that, what we were hearing is we could get a bid that was on, on the magnitude of double our estimate. So we decided to split it up so that it would give us the opportunity that, we wanted to build four wells and the improvements. If bids came in incredibly high, we wanted to have a way to still do some of the work if we could be okay with those costs, so we opted to do a base bid, there were two wells, and then two alternates, which were a new well on each alternate. So it was a way to give ourselves some flexibility in awarding it, and trying to insulate ourselves from potentially high bids coming in.
Price increases next year. I mean, it's, it's, it just kind of strikes me that you're kind of taking more of a risk if you're going to wait and try to bid out for those final two wells next year, as we see prices continuing to escalate. So I was just curious about that, because certainly, if you look at the, the amounts of the base bid plus the alternates, the prospective awardee is the second highest, actually. But I just, it was, that was, I just had that question. So thank you, David, I appreciate you answering that. And the other thing is, I was also struck by, it looks like you have four of the six bidders, maybe three of the six protesting the bid award against, for various reasons. Is that typical in a, in a, in a bid like this, or a process like this?
No.
This is unusual?
This is unusual, but I would say it's becoming maybe a little more regular. We have another project that opened, that's going to be January 11th, I believe, with some items, so I don't know if the climate's just changing with the bidders, being a little more aggressive on challenging each other.
Okay.
In my experience, I've not had three to four protest letters on a bid before.
Okay. And, Bill, I appreciate you taking us through kind of the legal determination, and I, and I understand that the county appears to be on solid legal ground, but it, but it's not, wasn't, I'm still not convinced that it was necessary. My, my interest here is ensuring that we get the best deal for the taxpayers, and secondary to that is certainly, you know, local companies, to me, are always more appealing. But yeah, I have some current concerns about this, that's why I was very intrigued by Supervisor Natoli's point about, you know, just starting the process over, and if, if we did that, what would it, what would the delay be, what would the additional cost be?
The cost, we're not very confident that we would get similar bids, we believe the costs would go up. And just as importantly is, it would.
I mean, more the administrative costs and the time delay, what would we be looking at, would you say?
Four, four months to five months of construction delay, which would certainly prevent us from having one of the wells online this summer.
Okay. Thank you.
Did you want to chime in, county executive?
Well, I knew that Mr. Peterson had some concerns about it, and I'm assuming that they have been addressed. About the delay, about?
The delay.
About the delay, yes.
Okay. Great. And are you finished, Supervisor Desmond? Supervisor Natoli.
So part of the identified criticality here is that we've been, obviously, in a serious, very severe drought. It looks as though that we've certainly, even with the prospects for what's going to happen the next few days, that we're, you know, seeing some betterment in the overall picture. Groundwater doesn't change, that's significantly based upon year-to-year rain. So I guess I'm curious about that, because that's the justification beyond any price considerations. You said it, it's in the staff report, and we say strain the water agency's groundwater supply system, can you maybe quantify that? Is it because, I assume there's demand, the house building continues out there, so, I see Mike Hewitt coming.
Defer here to Mike Hewitt.
Oh, Mike.
Good aft, is it afternoon?
Yep.
Being close. Good afternoon, Board. And, yeah, so Mike Hewitt, I'm the engineering manager at Sac County Water Agency, and there are a couple of points that I think got brought up, I think are important to address, so, Director Natoli. We do have surface water supplies available in addition to groundwater, and what we're seeing this year is, there's, excuse me, there's a good chance those water, those surface water supplies could be even less than what we had last year. And our groundwater supplies in the area as a whole is limited, and, you know, there's a lot of things that can happen that can cause a well or two to go down, and in that case, we'd be in trouble. And so the timing to get the wells is very critical. That's probably the most important thing from a staff perspective, is that we do get wells constructed for this next summer season. We did accelerate the schedule for the Poppy Ridge well, and another well that you'll be seeing next month, because of that. So, yeah, that's, does that answer your question, Don?
So, Michael, you've been given notice that with the Freeport Water Project, where we draw our surface water from generally for that portion of our system, that we've been given notice that we're going to have curtailment, and if so, is that hard and fast? And maybe elaborate if you could?
Yeah, so we actually did get a letter recently that our CVP water supplies were going to be at the health and safety limit, which might be somewhat similar to us this last summer. It could be even drawn down a little bit more, we're not sure what that's going to amount to yet. And then our, our surface water rights, you know, they're, they get pulled from us usually in the, in the springtime, so we go into the summertime with pretty limited surface water supplies. That's what makes the groundwater right now so important for us, in having this well in place. And the second one that's going to be constructed late in the summer provides some relief there.
So when you say the health and safety, you're talking about our surface water draw from the Sacramento River?
Yes, yes, so, you know, the Bureau of Water.
Because I saw you get that prescriptive list that was issued by Director of Water Resources, and health and safety is at the top of the list, for, for water rights users, and obviously, there's been curtailments, but I guess.
Right, so there's a, there's an MNI, I don't want to go into too much depth here, but maybe I could help explain it. So there's an MNI shortage policy that the Bureau will implement, and it, it drops how much water that we can take from the CVP project, and that's a big source of our water supply, our surface water supply over the summer. And they've already announced that they're going to a health and safety limit numbers, which does drop how much we can use. Again, it's pretty similar to what it, what it was last year.
So, okay, so, again, you said that, so, I mean, it's impactful.
Yeah.
And certainly provides uncertainty, but we aren't, at least from what we know today, looking at any significant drop in the surface water availability. Again, pictures can change, and, you know, I guess if it quit raining after this week, you know, we'd be in a very dry situation, but, you know, the reservoirs are coming up, and for health and safety needs, for MNI uses, particularly for those where, you know, it's critical for people's daily use.
Right.
You know, we get, as do other users in the system, get a, you know, get a higher priority. So if we're not looking at any significant curtailment, I mean, it's unpredictable. If you have a well, then you can run the well 24/7 if you have it, I mean, that's our conductive use program, but I guess I'm just trying to get the, get a handle, because again, I would just say that, you know, to have this kind of domino effect of bid protests, understanding the urgency, certainly, the water agency, you know, planning for the development in large part that's occurring in the Elk Grove area, in this case, in the Elk Grove area, but certainly Zone 40, 41 cover vineyard areas and other areas in the county, including Magic Cordova. I guess I, you know, I'm trying to get some sense, because as I'm weighing this, and I'm concerned, I think, you know, we've had the legal review of this, we've had, obviously, staff here, but this board's ultimately going to have to decide this, and, and, you know, I'm comfortable, as I said earlier, about some of the, the soft costs on, on this project, and I don't know what we're going to see on January 11th, but I guess you guys will be prepared for me on that when it comes forward.
Yeah, and, and I'm not sure if it'll work this way too, but I think this, this board item is to approve the hard cost contract with the contractor, and the, the soft costs, maybe it's something we can follow up with on a, on a separate path.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Mike. So, Ma'am, if I could, just one other question, and if I could turn to Bill, just real quickly again, Bill. So we heard from counsel for Myers, your analysis, you know, went to reasons why not, so am I, clear in my understanding that not only your recommendation, but the board, at least in your view, is not empowered to, on this matter, because of what you've stated previously, and maybe you want to restate that in brief, we could not make. previously, and maybe you want to restate that in brief, we could not make, is your view, we could not make the bid award to the apparent low bidder, and obviously, it's most, you know, responsive, responsible bid, that's a part of that, I mentioned in your analysis. So I guess for you or Krista, if you could kind of.
Well, that's right.
Yeah.
Right, you can, you can't waive the irregularity.
Okay. So if we were concerned about price, again, we, at some risk, not your recommendation, not staff's recommendation, we could reject all the bids and rebid it, but we're not, in this case, Anvil is recommended for your analysis, what, obviously, Water Resources, and that leaves us in a position where your recommendation is what we had before, so, okay.
We don't have further public comments, and I don't see any members of the board in the queue to speak. I always, when these RFPs go out, you always hope they come back with a clear decision, and so it makes it difficult when it doesn't.
Any more public comment, Ma'am Chair?
We do not have further public comment.
Well, I, I would just weigh in that, you know, I certainly am appreciative of the staff analysis. I think it was thorough, and I, and appreciate both Council and Water Resources staff, but I guess I'm not, I'm not prepared to go forward with the recommendation here today. So as it stands, I would be more inclined, again, at some risk, and it might be more costly than awarding the bid, but to, I think it throws the timeline off. I'm not so sure that the timeline couldn't be abbreviated to some degree. We've had this before on some projects where the bid packages are ready to go, there's costs associated with that. It wasn't entirely defined at the, at the podium, but I'm not prepared to make the motion. If there are other board members that are inclined to go with the staff recommendation, but I, I would be of the mind that we would rebid this project.
So your, your motion is to go out and do a whole new RFP process?
Well, just to rebid the project, but yeah, basically, reissue the request for proposals, yes, Patrick, that would be my, where I stand. But again, I'm not putting that in the form of motion, because others may see it differently, but that's where I'm.
I would support that approach also.
Okay, then I would.
You want to make that?
Okay, then I would, I would then move that we reject all bids and that we authorize Director to rebid the, the project.
And we have a second by Supervisor Desmond. Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present to reject all bids and authorize the Director to rebid the project.
Thank, I want to thank the staff. I know it's hard, these bid, the bid process takes time, so hopefully we can work through it, and in the next bid process, it'll be more clear. All right, next item, please.
Your next item is item number six, and I do have a request from the department to continue the item. It is to approve the issuance of the Sacramento County Water Financing Authority, Financing Authority of Series 2022 Revenue Bonds and Term Financing in a principal amount of not to exceed $95 million, and approving the forms and authorizing the execution and delivery of related documents. And the request is to continue the item to January 11th, 2022.
Okay. I have a motion by Supervisor Kennedy and a second by Supervisor Desmond. Please vote.
Unanimous vote by those members present, and we did not have any public comment on that item either.
Thank you. Next item, please.
All right, moving on to item number seven, is a resolution supporting the submittal of grant application administered by the Sacramento-San Joaquin Delta Conservancy and other funding entities by Ducks Unlimited for the Stone Lakes Restoration Project. And I do have, believe that Mr. Aaron Wills is on the phone.
Okay, is Mr. Wills?
Not, not quite yet. I'm waiting for them to transfer him into the meeting.
Do you have a presentation, Michael? Okay. Does Mr. Wills have a comment?
Hello, Mr. Wills, can you hear me? Mr. Wills?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, we can hear you, but I think I'm going to need you to speak up just a little bit.
Okay, I apologize, I'm outside the school picking up for early dismissal today.
So, Mr. Wills, did you want, wish to make a public comment about this item?
Um, no, nothing except for, thanks for taking the time on a busy agenda day to, to kind of potentially support the Stone Lakes Restoration Project. The project has been on in front of the board before, is essentially, essentially trying to continue the support, but lessen the administrative burden for future projects. So if you have any questions, I am certainly here to answer them.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Natoli has some comments.
Yeah, just certainly thanks to Aaron, and certainly thank you to Water Resources for moving quickly on this. We had this before, since 2017, and, and at that time, I remember Michael Peterson and Don Thomas scrambled to get it on a December agenda, and likewise, this time because of some of the grant deadlines, but it is a workable project. I appreciate the analysis by our staff and certainly recommendation, and unless you have any other public comment, I would move approval with our thanks to, and certainly the legal staff for their review of it as well.
Thank you. I have a second by Supervisor Kennedy, and do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not have any verbal public comments in the queue.
Okay, please vote.
And the motion carries by unanimous vote with those members present.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wills, for being here, and thank you, Michael, for being available. Next item, please.
Your next item is your nominations, item number eight. And you are continuing to January 11th, 2022, the California Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation Citizens Advisory Committee, Vineyard Area Community Planning Advisory Council, continuing to January 25th, 2022 Children's Coalition, continuing to February 9th, 2022 Cemetery Advisory Commission Development Disabilities Planning and Advisory Council, Rio Linda Alberta Community Planning Advisory Council, Sacramento County Mental Health Board, and the Sacramento County Youth Commission. For today's items, I have the County Service Area 4B.
I need, I need to continue that if I could, until January 11th, please.
January 20, 11th or 25th?
Uh, January 11th. I think we have the application, I just don't have the notes here in front of me, so.
Okay, thank you. Next is In-Home Supportive Services Advisory Committee.
Please continue to January 25th.
Thank you. Public Health Advisory Board.
Continue to January 11.
Thank you. Sacramento County Bicycle Advisory Committee.
Nominate Arlit Hodel.
Thank you.
If I said that right.
And that concludes your nominations. Item number nine is the County Executive Comments.
Just happy holidays, everybody.
Thank you. Happy holidays. And Supervisor Natoli, did you have comments?
Yes, I wanted to do in German, just give me one minute to get my notes here.
Supervisor Desmond had some comments, so do you want me to go first?
Might I be brief, yeah. While Supervisor Natoli's getting his notes ready.
Okay, sure.
Just briefly, to our county exec, and I, I know the county put out some information recently about some of the winter respite efforts that the county is undergoing, I really appreciate that. I'm a big believer, and you and I have discussed many times, that the county does, does a lot of great work, a lot of times does not talk about it enough. I think this is certainly a good step. I wish, I always wish we could be doing more, we all do. Can you describe a little bit, I think something I'm missing in, in some of the, the winter respite actions, and I know we're doing even more during the storm, can you describe a little bit what the county's efforts are at some of these winter respite locations, whether it's a county-run site or a city-run site, in terms of getting folks connected with services while we have an opportunity to connect with them there?
Well, in both circumstances, we make every effort to have staff available to make sure that they get connected to services. I cannot specifically speak to the ones that just happened, because I haven't received a briefing on that, on specifically what did happen, but that is our normal practice.
Okay, I appreciate it. So as a, as a general matter, whether it's a winter respite temporary shelter or a city-run shelter, county-run shelter, we, we make an effort to have county social workers there to connect folks with, with services that they need.
Yes, and typically, when the city, I'll speak to this, the county, that's standard practice, and when the city opens up a shelter, they typically request some support, and when that request happens, then we absolutely offer support.
Great, thank you very much, Ann.
Thank you. Supervisor Natoli, are you?
Yes, I am, yeah. Thank you, Ma'am Chair. I would ask that we would today adjourn our meeting in memory of Donald Girth, who was the longest-serving president of Cal State University of Sacramento, better known as Sac State, and I know someone that probably was known to members of this board. He spent more than 45 years in the Cal State University system and came to Sacramento State in 1984, where he was appointed to serve as president, and he served until his retirement in 2003. And I would just say that during my term of service, I had the opportunity to work with President Girth on some economic development matters. I know he was a part of some of the efforts in the region, certainly to, you know, bring forth, you know, some educational focus, to not only just workforce, but also to development of opportunities, educational opportunities at the, at the college and university level that would fit well, obviously, with some of the pursuits and some of the job opportunities that were either in our region or coming to our region. During his time as, as president, he, as I mentioned a moment ago, spent a lot of time focusing on, you know, growing the, certainly the opportunities at Sac State, but to, I think, developing the role of Sacramento State in, in the region as a vital economic engine, but one that obviously was relevant to many of the aspects of economic development and certainly of our community life. And I would just say that he was certainly well-used in some, some circles, but he was a gentleman and a scholar, you know, both literally and figuratively, and I know that devoted tremendous amount of effort to leading the university, but certainly being his leadership in the community and certainly within the CSU system. He was 93 when he passed a couple of weeks ago, leaves behind his wife Beverly, and throughout his life, obviously, and even in retirement, he continued to be a supporter of this community in many ways, and I think really embodied, you know, some of the, some of the ideals about higher education, but certainly what it means to be a leader of a major university here, certainly in our, in our community and the state. So I just would acknowledge his community service, his public service, and ask that we adjourn in his memory today. And I don't know, maybe Supervisor Kennedy may have had a chance to, we're both graduates of CSU, Sac State, and so you might have.
I did know President Girth. One of the things that always struck me was, he was very student-centric, and, and that's not always the case. He wasn't just about brick and mortar, but much like President Nelson today, he was very thoughtful and cared deeply about the students, and his blood truly did run green and gold. So, thank you for the adjournment.
Yeah, and I just failed to acknowledge that he, in addition to his wife, he leaves behind two daughters and obviously a son along, some, some grandchildren as well, so.
Thank you Supervisor Natoli. We all want to wish the family our most sincere sympathy, and so before we close, I want to wish everyone a happy holiday season, and at this time, we'll close our meeting in memory of Mr. Donald Girth. This meeting is adjourned.